October 12th at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Fire evacuation right behind you out through those double doors, right out into the park behind you or out through these double doors on your right-hand side, down the stairs and out the back into the parking lot in case there's an emergency. Secretary, call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Lufiari.
Here.
Lynda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Francis Alamo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Vincent Grillo is absent. Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Nicholas Lefakis.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show that all the regular members are here, so the alternates will only be seated if necessary in any of the applications tonight. Also, at this time, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'd like to formally introduce Joe Muley to our commission. Welcome, Joe. I know you were here at the last meeting. I'm sorry I wasn't here to meet you, so welcome aboard. I know you're going to do a fine job. You've been in town a while. You know a lot of the properties and everything else, and you're replacing good shoes. Karan Majmadar, who moved out of town, was a good member also. So again, formally welcome you aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 28th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, second by Vice Chairman DeGray. Any discussion on the minutes? Commissioner Holinsky?
Yeah, just for the record, I'd just like to state that I did watch the video of the meeting last time, and I feel confident that I can vote on the minutes and participate.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing that I was not in attendance at the last meeting and I was unable to fully watch the meeting for -- I don't know why I wasn't able to do that, but I was not able, so I will be abstaining from the minutes.
Me as well, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I'll be abstaining.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of the September 28th?
Aye.
All those abstaining? Two abstentions. Town Attorney report, I don't think there's any changes from the one we -- last one we had was October 24th. There's no executive session material tonight. Now, we have an enforcement officer's report. 359 Hazard Avenue is the enforcement officer. Would you like to chat about this tonight?
I'd like to. Commissioners, good evening. Rick Rochelli, zoning enforcement. So I submitted a report to you regarding 359 Hazard Avenue. They're seeking a certificate of occupancy for that project, and I have some concerns over it, as you can see in the report. It was initially approved as medical offices on the first floor. Subsequent to that, an application for text change was submitted and ultimately approved after several meetings. It included medical offices in the basement and nine residential apartments at 359 Hazard Avenue. It was approved, and subsequently, they submitted in a building permit, and I was advised or had notified of the application. And in reviewing the plans, it was found that the medical offices were removed along with the elevator. So I contacted the engineer at the time for the approval and was told that they no longer thought that it would be appropriate to have medical offices there, and they wanted to change them. They were advised that they had to request that change. They did, and that was approved administratively for those changes. Presently, there are eight apartments that are occupied. There's no CO that's been issued for it, and as you can see in the report, I attached some photographs of the -- what they call the business offices in the basement. Now, I'm not comfortable signing off on the CO simply because I was present at a couple of the meetings when this was approved, and I don't think it was the idea or intent of the applicant or this commission to allow it to stay as-is for these so-called offices. The floors are cracked. There's water stains. The walls have not been painted. The red bricks are bleeding through. It's flaking off. Pipes are in all the rooms. It's basically being used as storage, and this matter can continue on right now for any point in time. So I don't think what was presented to the commission at the time has been resolved and has been adequately fulfilled by the applicant. So those are the reasons why I have a concern about signing off on the CO, and I'd like to get the commission's input into this.
Thank you. Commissioner Stafford? Commissioners?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Richard Petronella, go ahead.
Yeah, so Rick, once again, nice job putting this together, you know, nice report. So an administrative change was made to eliminate the medical offices and change it to just business professional offices. So that in of itself eliminates the need for the elevator? That's what I'm hearing?
Correct. They didn't -- the elevator was initially proposed because the applicant said he was going to place his medical offices in the basement, which required ADA accessibility.
Sure.
So that was the reason for the elevator. Prior to submitting the building permit in, there was no advance notice to our office that their intention was to remove those medical offices until the actual building permit came in with different plans.
That change in of itself saved the applicant some $200,000 to $300,000, I'm sure. Also, I drive by there daily. I don't see -- I've never seen a sign advertising it for office space. So I look at it as there's no attempt to even try to rent out space. Looking at the photos, again, further, I don't see any attempt to even try to present something to show it as rentable space. Find it difficult to believe that there's even a valid attempt to try to do so. But anyway, those are my quick comments. I certainly support, you know, Rick's opinion on this as far as his concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner DeGray?
First, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I was there when the gentleman came and before us asking for a text change so that he could build this, and his whole intent was to have a medical office. And I have some issues about the fact that he has rented out apartments. This screams like other properties that are done this -- come before us, ask for text change, ask for this, ask for that, and then without COs fill the space. And like Commissioner Petronella, I've gone by several ti -- more than several times since this project started, I've never seen office space available. And so I agree wholeheartedly that you shouldn't be issuing. And if this man is renting out space, God help if there's some kind of problem that happens in those apartments prior to the CO. That's my take on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Alamo?
Yes. Echoing some of what we just heard, I was sitting, a member, when we approved this particular project. It was either a caveat or a condition of approval, I'm not sure, but it was to be mixed use, and the mixed use was to fit in the Hazerville neighborhood. And I think we even said, you know, being that it's the Hazerville district, you know, we can have some off-street parking because that came up as well. So that was, you know, the whole theory behind to repurpose that building and kind of get it back going and kind of, you know, mixed use like you see in that area. The other thing, on the CO part of it, I have a little problem with that. I don't know, Rick, if there's something you can do to give an occupancy CO to the residential areas, people living in there, and maybe do some kind of commendation or condemn the basement. I'm just -- my concern is here, and hear me out, if something should happen, like Lynda was just saying, let's say a fire, and there's an insurance claim, anything like that, it's going to come up that there's people living in there with no certificate of occupancy. So I'm not sure if, you know, you can separate the two. I'm not happy about what you found, and that's a great report, but other than putting people out in the street, what are you going to do here? Because if there's no certificate of occupancy, they shouldn't be living there. And that's my problem.
Well, the onus is on the project or the owner of the property. It's been made clear in the special use permit to him, when this was approved, what would be required. And part of that was that a completion of the project and a certificate of zoning compliance, they've submitted those in, but they're not in compliance, as far as I'm concerned, with the basement offices. He's had more than enough time and at least to finish it up to some extent, but there hasn't even been a -- and the other issue is, he went to the building department, the building official, to ask what was the bare minimum for such an office or such a room. And under the building code, obviously, is much different than what the regulations are for the use of this. They were the ones that came before this commission and asked for the text changes for this project.
Mm-hmm.
And...
I was here for both.
And they gave a presentation, and the -- I think at the time, those members, yourself and the others that were on the commission at the time, had a full expectation that the project would be completed with at least offices done to the extent where someone could go in and occupy those spaces. And that's just not the case at this point in time.
Right.
You can smell mildew.
Yep.
It's wet, damp. They have humidifiers going on in the basement.
Yeah, I've seen your photos. So my big concern is, again, the tenants. So I think I seen a photo of a -- looked like a new installed working sprinkler system. Is that true?
There's a sprinkler system in there.
Okay. Is there working sprinkler heads in that basement area?
I am not sure. I'm not positive of that, to be honest with you.
I think that's something we have to look at, which I hope there is. So if that fire protection system, sprinkler, fire alarm is intact in the basement, maybe you can circle back with the building inspector and the fire marshal to see if we can somehow not kick those people out of that house or out of it, because at least we'll have some fire suppression and safety if something should occur in the basement while you work out the planning pieces of it or the violations.
Spider.
So, I mean, that's my thought. I mean, we got to rectify it somehow.
Well, we do, but the issue is, it was approved as one project.
I get it. Oh, no, I get it, what you're saying.
So, I mean, even if they were to come back before this commission to try to phase that in, it's how long is it going to take to occupy those? I mean, if you gave them five years to -- nothing says five years from now, I'm certainly not going to be around, not around here anyways, but, you know, it's probability that he's not going to complete it.
Well, I think number one is public safety, and number two, slap an injunction on him. Take him to -- sue him. But we got to make sure that the people that are living there are safe and that they can occupy it. That's what we should be worried about. Let's deal with his violations on a separate whatever list or whatever way you want to do it.
I can talk to the building official, and we can have...
And meet with the fire -- whatever you have to do, but public safety, if there's people occupied in there, we need to make sure that all the protection systems and suppression systems are working properly. And then sue him, injunction, whatever you got to do with your powers and your authority, hit him, because he didn't do what he said he was going to do, obviously. Thank you, and a great report.
So again, I think I would kind of concur at this point. I think you need to circle back around, I think, as you well know, with the building department, because this is not just a zoning enforcement officer issue. This is like one or two other issues that we have in town. This is another one of those where it's -- a lot of it is on the building department's shoulders also, and they need to be heavily involved with this along. Ken, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I did. I'd like to thank the commissioners who were here when this was done for their excellent history of what was going on. When I read this report, my impression was that we need to have a plan, fix those offices up as the original plan was. And, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be full-blown fancy, but, you know, there should be no peeling paint. There should be no mold. The moisture problem should be taken care of, and actually then some plan to go ahead and rent them out as offices, okay? So I believe we need to go back to -- I agree with Commissioner Alamo that we should take some enforcement action here to request the owner to do what he said he was going to do and at least make the basement livable or available for offices to a certain extent.
Commissioner Petronella?
Yeah, another comment. Looking at the photos, I'm seeing a fire protection system in a basement, whether it's live or not. I'm assuming that it is, but I have a question to staff through the chair. Do we -- as the town -- does the town have an obligation to notify the tenants that are living there, that they're occupying the space without a CO? Because it does present an issue, and does the town have any liability on that? Should there be, you know, a letter from the town or the building department, a certified letter to each tenant just notifying that? That in of itself would put the tenants on notice where they can put the landlord on notice, hey, you're in violation of our lease agreement. So, you know, so that gives them the opportunity to move out as soon as possible, whenever they want, if the owner's in violation.
We'll check into that. It's certainly something that we can consider to send out letters to the residents of the different apartments. As you know, during a lease agreement, there's no -- the matter of a CO does not come up in a situation like that, so they have no idea one way or the other.
Just in case something should happen, and then if there's a fire, somebody gets hurt, and then it comes out, hey, they never had a CO, and then the town gets involved with this big...
Big problem.
Big problem.
Big problem.
And they just get dragged into it because of that, whether the town's liable or not. I don't think so, but they still get -- they're still going to get dragged into it. So I would certainly talk to the town attorney. Thank you.
Commissioner D'Antonio?
Right. I just wanted to strongly second Commissioner Alamo's concerns about the residents that are there that had no input into this, almost certainly no knowledge of the lack of CO. So we definitely have to be very respectful and diligent with whatever action taken, and I agree with Commissioner Alamo that whatever resolution we need to come down to, we need to see what we could do to balance the two, because it's very clear that there isn't even a good faith effort. So I agree with the fact that under these conditions, the building should not get its CO, but it is very concerning that there's, you know, eight families in this building right now, and to condemn the building or whatever process is that kind of is going to push them out under no fault of their own. That's really concerning. So, yeah, I hope, you know, we can get, you know, legal staff involved and however needed to kind of look out for our residents.
Yeah, go ahead, Frank.
Rick, one more follow-up question. How many means of egress are there to the basement? Is there one? Stairs that lead?
There are -- no, no, the elevator's not there. There are at least two means of egress from the basement.
That lead to the residential area, that floor?
Correct, to the first floor.
And what type of separation is there? What kind of door is there? Is there wood? Is there metal? Is it rated? Do you know?
From what I remember, the metal doors in the basement.
Metal doors, so there's probably somewhat rated door.
Yeah.
And that's another thing, I think, that needs to be taken into consideration if you do this roundtable. Those doors need to be rated until this thing's fixed. I know there's sprinkler heads down there, but I think that adds a layer of protection, in my opinion. And that's it. Thank you for that.
Okay. I just have one thing to add here. I think I'm going to finish up here. Probably think we're all set. I concur to everything that's been said here before and before I'm speaking here, but I don't want this to fall through the cracks, and I'm not faulting this staff at all. One bit, you know that. We've discussed some of these items, and this is not the only building we have in town that doesn't have a CO. And you know how upset that has made me over the last couple of years that we haven't been able to move forward on those either. So I'm sure there might even be someone else in this building you're going to have to get involved again, as usual, with this type of activity, and I hope that that person is agreeable to help you navigate through all this. I think you've heard the word from this commission, and we want some action on this. I think the commission would like some action on the other piece of property that I'm not going to give the address to tonight, but I think we know which one that is also, and we're still waiting action there. So having said that, I think you've probably gotten a good direction from us tonight. So seeing that, I think they've gotten... Yep, yep, go ahead, Lynda.
To the chair, to the staff. Is there a way we can impose fines on these people? I mean, we have to have a little teeth, and they have to get a little bite to get them motivated.
What I can do is issue the notice of violation for the conditions of approval.
Right.
Okay.
And that would be, you know, the regular process for enforcement. I mean, that would have to be the first step.
Yeah.
And we would go from there. We'll contact -- I'll contact other departments in the building that may have some input into this, along with the town attorney, and we can go from there with different avenues that have been brought up during the discussion.
All right, thank you.
All right, seeing that, well, that's ended. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to public participation. At this point in the meeting, the planning and zoning commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who was present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on our agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of this commission, or any matter where a decision of this commission may still be pending. That also includes anything that's basically pending due to legal activity. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in front of the commission tonight? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in front of the commission for a third time? Seeing none, public participation is closed. There's no bond releases. There's no continued public hearings, because the other item on our agenda, a public hearing was closed at last meeting. There's no new public hearings. We're moving on to old business. We'll get this done. Site plan review, PH 3074, but before I start with that, since I was unable to be at the meeting and I did not fully watch the video, I am going to recuse myself from this, not for any kind of conflict, only because I just wasn't here to participate, so I don't believe I have to leave the room. I'm going to turn this part of the meeting over to Vice Chairman Ginny Higley to run for this particular application, and I guess Commissioner D'Antonio is going to be sitting in for me. Commissioner Alamo is going to be doing the same.
I'll be recusing, yes.
So he's going to step back, and Commissioner Lefakis is going to sit in for him, because he did, even though he wasn't here, he did, you know, read the minutes and fully watched the meeting on the YouTube. So I don't believe either one of us has to leave the room, because it's not for any kind of conflict that we're recusing ourselves. So seeing that, Vice Chairman Higley, please go forward.
Would the applicants like to come forward? Are they here?
Yes, PH 3074, Laughlin Road.
I believe the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, we're just taking action, yeah.
Oh, they don't have anything to add?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any -- before we vote on it, are there any comments from members of this commission? No? Okay. Do we have -- do you have the motions?
Yes, I think right now we have three waiver motions to act on first, so I'll read the first. We're going to do them one at a time, obviously. So the first one is a motion to waive Section 3.0, streetlights. Motion to waive Section 3.0 of the subdivision regulation based on the following findings and reason for approval. Findings, A, the waiver will not have an adverse effect on public health and safety; B, the waiver is not in conflict with the plan of conservation and development; C, the waiver is consistent with the development pattern and other land in the area.
Second.
Are there any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
John Petronella.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
And Nicholas Lefakis.
Four.
And the reason for approval is there is no demonstrated need for additional streetlight in this location, and the traffic agent has not noted any concerns with regard to the waiver request. The second motion is a motion to waive Section 5F of the subdivision regulations based on the following findings and reasons for approval. The findings are as follows. A, the area is remote, rural, and low traffic counts and no proximal community facilities. B, there is no sidewalks in the area at present.
Any comments?
Second.
Now, any comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Lynda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
John Petronella is four. Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
And Nicholas Lefakis.
Four.
And the reason for approval, the waiver is consistent with the character of the area and will promote the POCD recommendations regarding preservation and protection of community character, and B, the engineering department and DPW director has not expressed any objections to the waiver request. Waiver number three, motion to waive Section 4H of the subdivision regulations based on the following reasons for approval, and this is for the developers' agreement. No public improvements are required.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lynda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
John Petronella is four. Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
And Nicholas Lefakis.
Four.
And the reason for approval, lot monumentation will be certified prior to -- will be -- lot monumentation will be certified prior to the issuance of certificate of zoning compliance for each lot's development. And now the main motion. Motion to approve public hearing number 3074 for a three-lot, single-family detached home subdivision, Carl and Loretta Nelson, applicant-owner, map 106, Lot 2, based on the plans of record dated, received 6/29/23, and including the following, which is to be included as notes on the final plan. The notes are as follows. Number one, the required open space shall be provided via a fee in lieu of the amount of $20,000 total to be paid at the conveyance of each lot proportionately. The amounts due at the closing for each lot shall be noted on the final plan. Two, this is a final approval and no performance bond is required as no public improvements are provided. Three, all utilities will be underground.
Second.
Comments? Roll call, please.
Lynda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
John Petronella is four. Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
And Nicholas Lefakis.
Four.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Vice Chairman Higley, for doing that. Appreciate that. Secretary Petronella, that motion is passed. That's closed. Now, we're going to be moving on to the Kraganfield Square Mall Traffic Impact Study.
Is that full screen? I'm looking to see if it's going to... But, nope. Okay. Can everybody see that okay?
Yeah, yep.
All right. Good evening.
Evening.
Hello, everyone. Thanks so much for having us. I will be doing -- do quick introductions on the next slide, but my name is Caitlin Palmer. I am from the Capital Region Council of Governments and just here to present before you the draft final traffic impact study for the Enfield Square Mall and specifically the routes of 190 and 220, as well as... the routes of 190 and 220, as well as some of the surrounding intersections. We are nearing the end of this study. This began in earnest in 2021, although it really started before that, which I'll touch on briefly in another slide or two. And basically, this sort of was asking the question about what would happen if the mall site were to be redeveloped at some point in the future? Kind of asking the questions, what would it be? And if it were to be redeveloped, what would the impacts on the surrounding roadway network be? And what I really like about this project is that the town was just sort of proactively asking that question. The Enfield Square Mall is by no means the only mall across the country that is facing similar problems as far as occupancy. So you're certainly not alone, but you are proactively asking the question. So that's great. I think I'll just be scrolling down, scrolling down. There we go. Here we go. All right. So just really briefly, scrolled too far. This is just the agenda. Most of this is going to be covered by Carl, but I'll touch on a couple of things as the project team sort of just very generally what a traffic impact study is and why we're doing it here. And then also just really quickly recapping the process that we've done up until this point and leading us to today. And then Carl will be touching more on sort of all of those pieces and really diving into the impact piece of it. Scrolling. Okay. So this is our project team. So again, I'm from the Capital Region Council of Governments. Enfield is one of our 38 communities that we sort of represent and help our towns advocate for, for various projects, particularly as it relates to transportation funding especially. That's a, that's a big part of what we do. It is one of the many hats we wear, but it is a, is a big component of Krog. And so I've been assisted on this study by, most recently, Annika, who you've not met, but previously you met Chris. And then the town of Enfield, Lori and Nelson have been critical to us during this entire process, as well as we've got the Department of Transportation. We've got the PM there, Patrick, who maybe has joined us today on this call if there's any questions specific to the DOT. If not, he was feeling a little under the weather. If not, any questions that you have, we can always take back to him. And then also CDM Smith, as I said. So we're joined tonight by Carl and Sharat as well. Carl will be doing most of the presenting, and any questions will probably mostly end up going to CDM Smith as well, but.
But Sharat can join if you want to pull his chair up. Okay.
So just really quickly, background, you know, we've talked about this before. It has been about a year. We were here last time in December. So just very generally, what is a traffic impact study? Just, you know, plainly, it's to review the potential impacts of a proposed development on the local roadway network. This is not uncommon, I'm sure, to.
It is on.
It is on. Okay, good. Just to, I'm sure applicants come before you with these traffic impact studies, usually on, you know, a specific parcel for a site that they control. So it's a little different here, which we'll probably talk about a little later. And then very specifically, why this site, why this location? This was actually identified as far back as 2017 with the Enfield Traffic Circulation and Improvement Study area. And so, you know, after a couple of years back and forth, we finally kicked it off, as I said, in 2021. And it is to explore the potential alternatives, like I said, for redevelopment, as well as identify what improvements to the network would be required as a result of those improvements. But we've actually taken this a little bit of a step further to go beyond what would be required, to also sort of look at what would be desired. And we did that based off of what we were hearing from the town, from feedback from you all, as well as what we heard from the visual preference survey. And I'm sure we'll go into more detail as that, on that as well, in a moment. And then last slide for me is just sort of a really quick recap of the process. So again, way back when, 2021, we had a kickoff meeting. We first did an existing conditions analysis. Carl's going to touch on some of that, as such as traffic, how, you know, intersections function, as well as crash data. Then we looked at what's called a future no-build conditions analysis. That's just a fancy way of saying, what would the traffic be like in the future if the mall were to stay a mall? After that, we also conducted a market analysis. So what are the potential viable uses? That I think is really critical for this process to sort of ground everything in a bit of reality. After we identified those, we were also conducting a visual preference survey. So this was their opportunity to give the community a chance to weigh in and let us know, let the town know, let a current or future property owner know what they might be interested in seeing. After that, we held our first public information meeting. Again, this was back in December. At that point, we had, you know, sort of very preliminarily identified potential access option changes to the mall that we could explore in our next steps. So we rolled that out to the public and then came before you all, and you all opined on which ones you'd like to see. So we're going to recap that, and you'll see the results of that information. As I said, the selection of access options, that was you guys, that was PNC. And you also confirmed for us what you wanted the build scenario to be for our future endeavors as well. So that future build condition analysis is that mixed-use idea that we had that came out of the market study again. And then from there, we conducted the traffic impact study. So that's the bulk of what you'll hear tonight. And yeah, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. So from here, it's Carl.
Great. Thanks so much, Caitlin. So just at the beginning here, I'm going to take you through some of the existing conditions that we looked at, just to sort of ground ourselves. So this is the, the study area that was analyzed. It's this whole area outlined in orange. We've got 15 intersections that we studied. And then we're looking at these four access points into the mall site. So there's this one on Route 190, two on Route 220, and one on Freshwater. And then I'll just draw your attention to the Thompsonville neighborhood, the future train station up here, the Connecticut River, Massachusetts. And so one of the critical things that we looked at before we looked at any future conditions is what the crash history is at all of our study area intersections. So we looked at crashes from 2017 to 2020, a four-year period. And this map here may be a little bit hard to see, but there's two things being illustrated here. There's circles that have different colors, and those indicate the number of crashes, just raw number, at each of these study area intersections. So red is 40 or more crashes in a four-year period. So that's 10 a year, right, on average? And a small green dot indicates a very low number of crashes, between 0 and 10, over that same four-year period. And then also, there is a, a number in black that indicates the crash rate. So if you are a vehicle who goes to this intersection, what is the probability that you will be involved in a crash? So we also certainly want that number to be low. And so the areas that we are most concerned about are the interchange here with 91 and Elm, and these two intersections on Hazard, one at the driveway to the mall, and then one at Freshwater. And then also, this intersection here has a high crash rate, even though it has a low total number of crashes. So that's something that we looked at carefully as well. And so in looking at traffic operations, we looked at three different peak periods. Weekday AM, right, commuting to work, weekday PM, coming home from work, and then a Saturday midday peak hour. And then we looked at that for the existing conditions. We took traffic counts in 2021, so that represented the base condition. And then we also looked at a future no-build 2045 condition. And what that means is, assuming that there's lots of small changes that will occur in the town, there will be small amounts of growth that will continue to build up, but nothing, no major huge change, and no build, meaning that the recommendations that came out of that market analysis are not reflected here. We use a traffic simulation software called Synchro version 11. So this is just sort of a diagram of what the, the network looked like. And this is a zoomed-in version of, of an individual intersection, where you can see that we're modeling each, each lane and all the different individual turning movements at those intersections. And so in our study, we looked at a lot of different variables that describe traffic operations. We looked at queuing, so like how far cars queue back. We looked at delay, so if you're a vehicle using the intersection, how many seconds longer will it take you than if you were just able to go through freely? What we're going to focus on today is level of service. So that's like a report card of, of how well the intersection is operating in terms of delay experienced for intersections here. We've got A through F. A meaning almost no delay experienced, and F meaning it's breakdown conditions. So there's a high level of delay experienced, and traffic is flowing poorly. We're going to look at a lot of level of service graphics here in a second, but I'd just like to emphasize that level of service A is not necessarily a, a good condition. It represents a town where no one lives, and, you know, no one wants to visit your businesses. So level of services, you know, C, D, and E are, are great. We just really want to avoid those level of services F, where your, your roadways are failing and traffic is, is no longer able to flow in a, in a reasonable way. So this is the existing condition level of service. And so there's 15 intersections here, and at each one, there are three small boxes. You know, you can see the colors, green, yellow, and red. And at each intersection, there's three letters. The first one represents the level of service in the AM. The second one represents the level of service in the PM. And the third one represents the level of service in the Saturday peak hour. So you can see generally, the worst levels of services, those, those reds are occurring both in the Saturday peak hour and the PM peak hour. The AM is, is comparatively operating better. And then in the existing condition, this is that, that 2020 volumes, or 2021, rather, the, the intersections that are, are operating least well are this intersection at Hazard and Freshwater and surrounding intersections, and then also this intersection at Freshwater and Elm. And so this is the 2045 future no-build analysis. And it's, it's critical to sort of take through each of these words and what they mean. So I spoke briefly to 2045 future, meaning that there's that little bit of background growth. No-build means that the mall sort of stays as is, but importantly, this analysis and these, these volumes and assumptions came from the Department of Transportation are assuming that the mall is at 100% occupancy. So not like the current condition. Every single parcel inside of the mall is, is fully occupied, and traffic is projected to what traffic would be like in this area in that condition, where the mall was operating as it's been approved to operate, right? Every, every business full. And certainly, it also includes, you know, the target and then all of the detached buildings in the site, also using these four driveways that exist to access the mall. And so with all of those assumptions, which all increase traffic demand on the network, we, we can see that, that traffic performs worse, unsurprisingly. So some, some critical intersections to look at is the interchange of I-91 with Elm. Operates poorly at, at both of its two intersections. You can see that at this northbound interchange, you've got level of services in the green and yellow colors, but because it's sandwiched so tightly between the I-91 southbound intersection and then this access point to the mall that is so close to it, even though these levels of service look good, because it's, it's sandwiched between other Fs, it's operating poorly as those queues are spilling back, because there's not adequate storage for them. And then other, other sections that are operating poorly is on Freshwater. You know, Freshwater acts as, as sort of a, a parallel path to I-91 here, and is bringing a lot of traffic, both to all of these developments, but also connecting 220 to 190. So this intersection at Freshwater and Elm, and this intersection at Freshwater and Hazard, both operate poorly, especially in the PM and Saturday peak hours, as well as this, this driveway access point to the mall. And so from there, we, you know, Caitlin touched on the market study, and this is what is a, a good feasible option based on the commuting patterns, the, the businesses that exist today, and other market forces. And so this is what the results of the market study came up with. That, and this also takes into account the visual preference survey, that over 1,000 people in town and people who commute into town all had input on. And that's that they wanted a multifamily residential, retail, commercial, industrial, and tourism. And so the build condition, whenever we say build, this is what we mean, is 150 townhouses and 690 apartments. So that's a mix of different types of residential housing, 150,000 square feet of mixed-use retail, two restaurants. It's important to note that these are, are mid or upscale restaurants. We're not talking about fast food restaurants here. 38,000 square feet of medical offices, and 65,000 square feet of entertainment, which doesn't necessarily represent one giant facility. It could be several facilities, but that sum to a total of 65,000 square feet, largely based on the visual preference survey that, that motivated that. And so this is, this is not necessarily the only thing that could operate in this area, but it is what was assumed in this study as a feasible, viable option that, that we were studying here. And then with that said, with the, the visual preference survey, with the sort of visioning of this being a pedestrian-friendly corridor, you know, lots of new businesses, we wanted to look at access management to see how we can make improvements to, to not only make traffic flow more smoothly, but to also accommodate pedestrians, bicycles, make this a safer corridor, make this a, a more accessible corridor for all users. And so we looked at quite a few different access management options. Currently, today, there's four access points to the mall. In our traffic counts that we took in the existing condition, those four access points are all used almost equally. About 25% of traffic uses all four of those driveways, which is pretty interesting. There's not like an obvious, single driveway that should be immediately closed because no one's using it. That's, that's certainly not the case here. So we brought quite a few different number of access options to the public, and they selected two of them, which they found to be the most preferable. And then you all confirmed those two choices, and, and that's what we studied. So that's what I'll show here in a second. So this is the existing conditions, where you have all four access points fully open.
One second, just want to emphasize that point, especially since Mr. Muley is new to the commission. Again, we had the choice of that after you had that interaction with the public. And if I remember correctly, we actually kind of voted on it. If I'm trying to think back now, it was almost a year ago. And we came up with those two or three options, whatever it was. So that's already been, I don't want to say pre-blessed by this commission, but pretty much you, you, you got the direction of where to go. Okay, Joe? Just to bring you up to date.
Thank you very much, yes. And just to describe what, what you're seeing here, for each driveway, you see, you see two circles. The one that my mouse cursor is on, so this, this lower one describes the access available for the mall. And then the green circle above it represents the access available for the driveway right across the street from it. So in this existing condition, you're able to access fully from any of these four driveways. And so one of the two options that we looked at is option, we're going to call option A, and it is a full closure of the western driveway to the mall that's on Elm Street. So right now, there's two driveways on Elm Street. This option closes one of them. And so any traffic that would use this driveway, the assumption in our analysis now uses the other driveway on Elm Street. And then the driveway across the street from that one that we're recommending closing would be converted to right-in, right-out access. So if you're coming from the east and you're traveling on Elm Street, and you want to go into this driveway, you're allowed to do so, but you can't turn left into that driveway. And similarly, you can't turn left out of that driveway. So that provides for much smoother traffic flow, much fewer conflicts, and sort of separates out these two traffic signals that are currently so close to each other, and allows there to be more spacing for cars to queue up, to collect and sort of release, to access I-91. You know, especially there's a lot of traffic coming off of I-91 that is turning right and then immediately hitting a red light, right? If, if we can eliminate that condition, that's, that's what option A represents. And then the other option we looked at is, is very similar. It's option B. It's, it's exactly the same, except for that driveway that I was just speaking to from the mall is now also right-in, right-out. So right turners will still use this driveway. If you're coming off I-91, you can immediately turn right into here, but any other movements, right? If you want to go through to access here, you'll be rerouted to use this other Elm Street driveway.
And I would just add for the benefit, well, and also, it's, it's been a while. The other options that were on the table was one where you had us do a traffic impact study, looking at no changes whatsoever. And then we also had one where we were actually proposing potential adding an additional driveway over on, I believe, Freshwater. Am I missing any?
There was also one where we restricted right-in, right-out on Freshwater as well.
So you went with A and B.
All of the options that we looked at and presented to the public maintained full access on Hazard Avenue. That was, that was never considered. That was never considered in any of the options. And if you want to look at any of those other options, we have them at the back of the presentation if that's requested. And so this is the results of looking at those three different options. So this is level of service for 2045 future, build without improvements. So what that means is the mall is no longer present. The Target and all of the small buildings in the site remain and still contribute traffic to the area. And then that mixed-use build development that we spoke to earlier with, you know, residential, commercial, entertainment, is now in this site and using these driveways. And so I'm going to take you through those three options and how each of them performs. So this is the existing access. This is no change to your roadway network. You can see that the easternmost driveway performs at a level of service E, especially on that Saturday, and Freshwater performs at a level of service E, both in the PM and the Saturday. And you're going to see in all of these options, this southbound intersection where I-91 intersects with Elm operates poorly during all peak periods. It's a very tight location. There's lots of lefts turning off here and immediately hitting another intersection. It's a tricky location with geometric concerns. And then this is Option A access. So you can see that this intersection is unchanged, but previously, we saw a level of service E in the existing condition at that western driveway. When you close that western driveway, that level of service E sort of shifts over to that eastern driveway. But pleasantly, there's no level of service F here. So even though now this one driveway is taking the job of two driveways, traffic is operating relatively well. It's functional. And Freshwater operates at a level of service E in both the PM and Saturday. And this is access Option B, which is extremely similar to access Option A in terms of operational results. This is a D right here. This is a C right here. That's the only change. So between those two access options, we're talking about a difference in delay for an average driver driving this network of seconds. You know, maybe it'll take you two seconds longer to get to work versus the other option. So the differences between these two access options are very minor. And then this is just a sort of comparison of those three that you just saw.
If I may interrupt again, if I may, if we can go back, it doesn't matter, one slide.
Sure.
Just to make the point again, is that it looks like, unfortunately, any of the options we have here really isn't going to be able to improve the access onto 91 southbound and coming off southbound. On the other side, it would seem to me, just for point of reference, just for the record, that the only improvement we could do there if the state of Connecticut tore that down and made that multi-laneway a lot wider. It just seems to me that none of the options we can do, or you guys can do, or you recommend would improve that intersection.
Sure. Yeah. And we didn't look at any major improvements to this intersection because it's sort of out of the scope of what we were looking at.
We just want to make that point for the record.
But yeah, absolutely. But there are improvements that can be made. So this, everything I've shown you so far is without improvements. So this is just your existing roadway network, no major changes, just, you know, paint a line saying you can't access this driveway anymore, and how will traffic respond, right? And so with that being said, we did look at improvements, right? We want this system to perform well. And so we considered a lot of different things. We used our whole toolbox here because we want to make this an accessible, friendly corridor for all roadway users, anything that we can do to improve traffic and improve access for, you know, buses, pedestrians, bicyclists, largely influenced by the visual preference survey that your public participated in. So I'm going to go through some of the things that we looked at and whether or not they were feasible in this location. So we looked at a road diet on Elm Street. A road diet meaning, you know, taking the width of the roadway and reducing it, taking away a travel lane. This could be helpful in allowing for pedestrians having a shorter crossing distance if they want to go between two different sites, potentially having a median in the center that allows for pedestrians to do a two-stage crossing, so they only have to cross halfway to make it safer for pedestrians. Unfortunately, we looked at this option, and the level of services were F at almost every intersection, and you have gridlock on all of Route 220. So unfortunately, it's not a feasible option, at least with the traffic volumes as we have them. We also looked at traffic signal operations on Elm Street and Hazard Ave. We modified the coordination, so how each traffic signal is talking to each other and trying to provide a smooth flow between individual intersections. We looked at improving pedestrian phasing. So the type of pedestrian phasing that we're recommending here is leading pedestrian interval. So what that means is that instead of a typical way that a pedestrian will cross the intersection, now it's broken up into two stages. So the first stage is a five-second period where pedestrians are the only people allowed into the intersection, where they get to establish their position, right? Where all the drivers can see you, you're right in the middle of the road. And then after that short period, that leading pedestrian interval, cars that drive parallel to you are now allowed to go. So instead of a traditional concurrent situation, the walking person light is illuminated and the green ball is illuminated at the same time, and potentially, people are turning and not looking where they're going. So this represents safer operations, but it also runs very efficiently. We looked at improving vehicular detection. So that means for every approach and every lane along these corridors, there's detection that is allowing the traffic signals to allocate green time as efficiently as possible, so that if there's no more cars there, you no longer need to serve green there. And so it can allocate that green more efficiently. And then currently, there is a double left turn at the intersection of Freshwater at Elm, and we looked if that was truly necessary based on the volumes that use it. And we found that operations perform better if it's only one left turn lane. And having it be only one left turn lane makes the pedestrian crossing safer and allowable with the pedestrian phasing that we're recommending here. So those are all recommended in our future recommendations. And then we also looked at roundabouts at two different locations. We looked at a roundabout at Elm Street at Freshwater and a large sort of dog bone-style roundabout at the interchange with I-91. Unfortunately, both of those would have to be large two-lane roundabouts to operate at any sort of acceptable level of service. And we received, you know, input that that would not be a preferable condition in this location where there's not super strong familiarity with roundabouts, you know, and the right-of-way concerns meant that we didn't look further at implementing roundabouts at those two locations. And then we also looked at improvements in the bike and PED network and improvements in transit. A recommendation for the future is a protected bicycle facility, either on the roadway or a off-road bike facility, that would require future studies in engineering. And then I just spoke to a lot of the improvements to pedestrian access, that leading pedestrian interval I just discussed, and then increased crosswalks, sidewalk ramp installations and upgrades, and then modern traffic signal equipment upgrades, so that includes, you know, that walking person, a push button, and a countdown timer at all of these crossings, as well as crossings for all four legs of these intersections, especially on Elm, where we see so many pedestrians. You know, we really want to make sure that pedestrians feel like they have full access here and, you know, are more able to use your businesses, right? And then we're also recommending bus shelters along the corridor. And so these are, you know, I sort of already said these recommendations, but what we're recommending is access Option A. So I'll cycle back to that in a second. But that's that full closure of that western driveway because it gives a good level of service and also gives that separation between those two traffic signals, so that you have more room for cars to queue, less sort of frantic driving to try to get through that potential yellow light if you're trying to drive there, and reducing that traffic signal there gives more right-of-way for pedestrian and bike facilities at that location. And then we're recommending those traffic signal improvements we spoke to and those transit and bike improvements. And so we implemented all of those in our traffic simulation model. And so these are those final level of services. It's that same 2045 future build, but this is with those improvements. And so I'm only going to focus on this central one, which is access Option A. Yeah, do you mind? Perfect. So the operations perform very well. So this is with the assumption that all four crosswalks are allowed at every single intersection on 220, and we see level of service of D or better everywhere except for this western driveway during only the Saturday peak hour, which is good, right? It's a Saturday, everyone's shopping, everyone's coming to the mall. You know, you're going to experience some traffic. And that's even with lots of pedestrians pushing those push buttons, you're still experiencing a level of service E, so there's no breakdown conditions. And then still, we're seeing level of service E for all three peaks at that interchange. But this is, you know, a very exciting result to see, seeing that, you know, level of service is D or better in the majority of locations here. And just to reiterate, we're talking about access Option A here, which is the closer of that driveway. So even with one of those two driveways closed and our assumptions that we've got this large new development here, during the AM and PM peaks, that driveway, which is now handling the load of two driveways, is operating at a C or D at its worst during your weekdays.
I would just add too that you're probably wondering, well, you might be wondering at least why A over B when you see more green on B. And Carl can probably expand on this, but I think it goes back to the idea, potentially, oh, thank you, that, you know, the more pedestrian-friendly environment that we want to create on 220, because again, the pedestrian counts that we saw, this particular option eliminates more conflict and makes a safer bike pedestrian environment in Option A than it technically does in Option B. So if you had anything else to add, but.
Nope. That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question just on that slide?
Questions or would you like to wait for the end?
I mean, we're, this is pretty much it, yeah. So we can talk next steps.
Yeah, hold on. I want to go back to that slide at the end, though.
Sure.
Yeah.
You can go ahead and ask your questions because next steps is, okay, okay. Just get through the last one, please, in symmetry. So just next step, so again, we're looking for, oh, sure. Thank you.
You're on television, people can't.
Sure. So just again, that we are coming to you to ask your support for the recommendations, to answer any questions that you might have, and get a formal endorsement from you all here that will allow us to finalize our traffic impact study. Next steps for the town would be to share this with any current future property owner or developer. Again, I think it's, the private property owner is going to be, you know, through the zoning regulations, allowed to do and build what they are going to be able to. But I think it's going to be helpful for them to also see what the community feedback was and what the results of the study were, to know, you know, ahead of time what their impacts potentially could be. And then also, obviously, determine potential funding opportunities to actually get this completed. And we've already begun conversations with DOT to understand what those next steps are to actually, you know, get this project built. Because it seems regardless of what you do with the site, whether it stays a mall or whether it gets redeveloped, some sort of mitigation in the future is going to be necessary. We saw that based on the levels of service. And there's no reason why a lot of the recommendations that Carl's talking about couldn't be implemented now and have benefits in the immediate future. So that's it for next steps. So we can do questions.
All right. So if I steal thunder for a second, Chris. So at least if I want to, I'm going to go back, if you guys don't mind. I'm going to go back, was it nine months ago, the last time we were here, I think?
December, yeah.
So to me, it's almost, this is a two-different-phase project in my mind. One is, of course, the impact study about the potential redevelopment of the mall area itself and between those Freshwater and 91 and the whole thing Hazard and Elm, 220, 190. But I think if you kind of remember, I'm really concerned, I know that's where Chris is going to, I'm really concerned about the pedestrian improvements we can make along Elm Street. To me, that's almost like a separate project because I don't want to have to wait for some developer who might or might not do something with the mall where we really have a need now to improve that pedestrian on Elm Street. So I know I kind of stole your thunder, so I'm just going to, I'm going to go right to Chris because I don't want to steal his thunder. Go ahead, Chris.
No, you're great. My question for the second-to-last slide, and I think it's answered in the pamphlet we got, but it seems like, so for Option A, we'd be getting rid of that first intersection, number three, at least as a four-way intersection. So would you anticipate the crosswalk remaining there then, going north-south on 220?
That certainly could be designed. That is not the assumption that was made in this analysis, but it would operate very similarly.
So what would be the assumption then in between, so where would the crosswalk be between one, or crosswalks be between one and four?
So there would be two crosswalks at one, two crosswalks at two, two crosswalks at four, crossing 220.
Crossing north-south?
Yes.
Okay. So one, two, and four? Sorry, is it?
Yeah, and five, and six.
Okay.
So, but no signal here, but a pedestrian-only signal could certainly be, you know, designed, installed, modeled, right? That wasn't part of this study, but yeah.
Right. Yeah, my concern is between two and four is a long distance.
Yeah.
So two is definitely a more feasible option, but either way, so two and four is a long distance for pedestrians. So that's my thought there, so. Yeah, and then I did have a question, just more broadly about the study. A lot of focus on level of service. Does vehicle miles traveled come up, the VMT measure? How is that? I know it's tough because it's not a specific land use you're planning for, but you do have a certain amount of housing in it. This is a very central location in town. It's, you know, it's a very different type of measure from level of service, and it's more focused on access than just absolute throughput. So if you don't mind sharing your thoughts on that.
The VMT changes as a result of the closure of this driveway are negligible, but we did not look at VMT impacts from the perspective of the new development or...
I will add, so it's kind of touching actually on both points made. Some of the additional recommendations in this study are sort of recognizing the limitations of the traffic impact study. It's a very vehicle-centric study. I think originally, when this project was conceived, it was not a TIS necessarily. So two things, on the bike PED piece specifically, we did not look at sort of geometry and traveling widths and right-of-way width. So that is a recommendation, is to look and take that next step. As you said, that is another phase that needs to happen. And then also on the VMT, I believe one of the recommendations is to consider maybe in concert with the Thompsonville train station, some mode shift and analyzing what the potential mode shift could be in this area. So, good question.
Thank you.
Christian DeGrae?
I spoke at your public presentation, and I have huge concerns about the existing property owners. And you always talk about the mall as the property owner. Well, that's not true. There are property owners that are smaller parcels, which we approved, and by blocking these driveways, blocking in this Option A, and not allowing people to do a right turn into that, I can't read your numbers, I'm sorry, and you're blocking new businesses access. And, thank you. And then making a right turn going west, you're also blocking access, again, to businesses that would actually, if I'm a Dunkin', I don't, I'm not a Dunkin' Donut person, but if I were a Dunkin' Donut person and I'm driving... Dunkin' Donut person, but if I were a Dunkin' Donut person, and I'm driving down 91, I don't know the area, I see a Dunkin' Donut sign, I'm heading north, I get off, I'm going to expect to make that left-hand turn. You block that, I don't know where my next turn is. You, you're, you're limiting business access by these options, and I believe there's a couple other commissioners, when we were talking about these, we didn't agree with any of your options. There were some that we wanted to see, and we didn't see that in the study. So, I have concerns about business access on these two exits, these two entrances that you want right turn or no turn into. Also, if there is redevelopment, we don't know who's going to be developing where on this piece of property. So, I think those are considerations that we, I would like to see, you know, and I understand you're talking pedestrian, but there is, and I asked, in the original time you came to us, have you looked at how Holyoke Mall, that access from 91 is handled? You don't have these problems that we're having here on Elm Street. They made dedicated lanes that go directly into their property. They have meridians there. You can't, and part of our problem here, you come off of 91, you've got two right lanes, and people are vying to just get over and across, and it's a nightmare sometimes. So, I really would like to know if you did look at that.
If I may interrupt, Commissioner DeGrae, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I want to, I just want to rehash where we came from.
I do know where we came from.
And I know exactly where you were talking about. You brought this up when we, when they were here nine months ago, and this commission voted to, I don't want to say disregard your concerns, we took your concerns, the discommission gave direction to these staff people to go in a different direction, that we heard your concerns, there was not a majority of people to go along with that vote to give them direction. I appreciate you bringing that up again tonight, but I don't think we can change midstream now after we gave them direction on what to do nine months ago. And you were, you know, clearly, we'll probably get back to the minutes.
Chairman, no, let me finish.
No, let me finish, I had the floor.
I bring this up because.
I had the floor. So, basically, what I'm saying is that, I'm glad you brought this up, they heard it again, but we gave them a different direction nine months ago, and we're certainly not going to turn around now and change direction on them, because it would appease or not appease the whole total project where we are. So, having said that, you can now have the floor.
I want the public to realize, because we are talking about the public, not just this commission, that these are going to affect them on a day-to-day basis, and we have no idea what's going to happen with the mall at this point.
That's a valid point, and the key word here is could, impact.
Right.
I think we're going down the road here, the plan they have here is something that might be implemented down the road. That's why I brought the original point tonight, was I wanted to see the separation of the pedestrian issues from this if we could, because that might be something that we could do, that is impacting business, or we don't have any idea at this point what might happen with the mall, which might invalidate this study, who knows? Hopefully not, but it might. So, again, we're, we're, we're getting a study here, and that's all it is.
You pretty much answered whatever I, what I was going to say, which is, you know, the uncertainty, it's, it's why we didn't really focus too much on what was going to happen on the parcel, because it is privately controlled, we didn't really get into conceptually what it was going to look like. It is a very good point, and I think, you know, we, we had, I believe Nelson, prior to the first meeting, had reached out to property owners, not just the, the mall site itself, property owner in Amdar, but others as well, and I, he's no longer with us, so I don't know, since he doesn't work at the town, I don't know if he did that prior, leading up to the second meeting, but it is very much a possibility and not definite. But, and I would also say that, again, those other recommendations are definitely, you know, the leaving pedestrian interval, the, the traffic signalization, all of that is definitely a recommendation that can carry forward right now. Did you have something to add?
And, and all of those recommendations that, that we discussed related to the pedestrian accommodations were analyzed, not only for access option A and B, but also for the existing access options, so that's, you know, that analysis is complete as well.
And one other comment, I do believe CDM Smith and Becca particularly maybe had looked at Holyoke. The one comment I would make on sort of the channelization of the traffic is, that particular scenario likely would create a less safe environment for the pedestrians. Better for traffic, for sure, to kind of just, you know, keep them in their lane, channel them right into the mall, but as far as the mindset you get from drivers that do have that, you know, right-of-way on those blinders, that would be a concern. It's not something we modeled specifically, I don't know, but.
Right.
Yeah, well, thank you. Commissioner Laimo?
Thank you, thank you for coming. I was here last time, you guys were here, and I think we kind of seen A and B, some sort of A and B last time, initially, and I remember what I said then, and I say it again now, I was not in favor of A, I was more in favor of B, and I am still in favor of B. I echo some of the concerns of Commissioner DeGrae relative to the business owners, you know, with less traffic access. But, my big point, and I said this last time, and I'm sure if we look at the minutes, you're going to see it, my big point is emergency vehicle access. Closing that entrance is not a good thing, when it comes for response. A lot of the vehicles that go into that mall, go east, they come from the west and go east. I have decades of experience of driving emergency vehicles east on Elm Street, and I'm telling you, I think it's a disaster if you close that. And again, I think you mentioned 2021 studies, you were using traffic flows from 2021, and that's pandemic time, to me. I don't think they're accurate, no disrespect, that's the information you had. But, closing that entrance is going to delay response time into that mall, you're going to have cars stacked up to try to get into the second entrance, just beyond the mobile station, the one you're saying that you're going to leave open, you're going to have a stacking of cars trying to get in, and maneuvering 100-ton fire trucks, and police cars and ambulances up and down that area, is going to be tough. I like B, you know, that's a compromise, we don't close it, but at least you can still enter if you're going east.
Right.
You know, I think that's a good compromise. A, for me, is 100% out of the question, and I base that on professional experience.
And if I can, both of these, both these options are really on the table at this point, because again, nothing, option A or option B, nothing's.
I'm fine with B.
Yeah.
A, no way.
And it can be relooked at later on, if, and hopefully when, some potential development happens in the mall area, we can go back with you and take a look at these options. That's why you're giving us these, both these options. We don't have to tell you tonight which option we really want to have, correct? We can still leave both of these on the table, am I, am I correct?
Yeah, I would agree with that. This would just be, you know, a recommendation of option access A because of these reasons, sort of from the, from the consultant team to the town. But, again, there's no, there's no immediate need to make a decision, you don't, you can leave that out of, you know, a resolution. I would also just add, and maybe Carl, you can, you know, add a little bit more context too, the helpful thing about this whole process, doing a traffic impact study on a hypothetical development, is you're sort of testing that worst-case scenario. We're using that full build-out potential of the market analysis to sort of guide those future build scenario numbers. We're looking at access option A, we don't know if it's going to happen, but worst-case scenario, that's what you're going to see for your traffic. So, it is just kind of, it's, it's a tool for the town, really, at this point.
And I just had a little more, Mr. Chair.
Sure, sure.
So, I was looking at the little graphs on the bottom, and the last one was that piggy bank with the key. So, are we, is there, are we, can we really get there? I mean, I've been around, I just told you how long I've been around, I've seen a lot of these studies come and just go collect dust upstairs. I don't hope that's not going to happen, so is there an avenue to get to the piggy bank and somebody turn that key?
My, I totally understand what you're saying, and that is, that is something shared by CROG, just, not on just this study, but across the board, kind of, we're not super involved necessarily in the past on the implementation side of things, that falls to state and local government agencies usually, but we, as an organization, we're asking that question, but so is DOT. As I mentioned, I had a conversation with the PM on the DOT side, and they are working, they're still, you know, in the process of figuring out exactly what the best process is, but they are working on identifying a process that does implement the project. So, as we've discussed so far with them, the next step would be, after the town formally endorses, the recommendations that they do want to move forward at this moment, essentially, it looks like the next step is going to be a memo that CROG can create, and.
There's the money, is that him?
Looks like Patrick is also.
Guy with the key just popped in there?
He's right there. To create a memo, and that we would, we would create an understanding between, you know, steps, so.
Just so, oh, I'm sorry.
Patrick is here, so we can always let him speak to that.
He's the guy with the key?
He's one of the guys with the keys.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Patrick. Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Patrick Zepatka, I'm one of the project managers for the Department of Transportation. I, I've been working with Caitlin on the study since it started. Just to answer your question, yes, there are ways that this can actually turn into a project, or you can actually find the funding for it.
That's good to hear.
In the department, it's true, yeah, so, you know, once this is endorsed, the next step is, you know, from the town municipalities' perspective, is we want you guys to, you know, say this is what we want to do in our area, whether it's option A, option B, if you're looking for pedestrian facilities or amenities, you know, put that checklist down. We're going to work, CDM Smith and CROG will work with you guys, and we're going to develop a memo, and then we can do a simple proposal to the department. And once we do that, we'll either, A, look to fund it and build it ourselves, you know, with, you know, with you guys on board, or we're going to look for funding opportunities that, you know, the region can go for and help you guys turn this into an actual project. You know, the, the culture's changed at the department, and I, I just want to go on record to say that, you know, these studies that we are completing, we, we want to turn them into projects sooner than later. So, if it's something that you guys are serious about, and it's something you want to turn into a project, and let us know, we're going to take a look at it seriously and try to find the funding to build this.
I really thank you for, for chiming in, and that's, that's very good news. You know, just as a community member, you know, over the years, we've been promised so much, and so many studies, and things that are going to happen, and we never see them. I mean, it's been happening and happening, so, thank you for chiming in, I appreciate your input, and hopefully, we can see this happen. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other? Commissioner Holinski?
Yeah, all due respect to my colleagues on the commission, frankly, I think option A is the safest for pedestrians. And we get a lot of pedestrians there. In fact, when I first came on this commission, I was surprised that the most volume of pedestrians on one of our main roads is Elm Street. I always thought it was Hazard Avenue, you know? So, I think we can't lose sight of making it safe for pedestrians. We have a lot of people who live in the Thompsonville area, who are employed by these businesses, and so they're walking down Elm Street to get to work. So, I think that's, that's a point we need to keep in mind about option A.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lefakis?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, did you have a response?
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that, that, that that was very much motivated by this high-crash rate locations at, at both of these intersections, that we were looking to mitigate. There's lots of short, fast movements that are occurring, and crashes, you know, from the public safety perspective, that motivated those access options.
Thank you. Commissioner Lefakis?
Yes, I, I too have some reservations about making changes to that intersection at this point, the one, the westernmost intersection, but I, I think we should move ahead with pedestrian safety. I've seen in some places where there are flashing lights that indicate this is a crosswalk. I think we can look to see if something like that can be installed in some of the heaviest traveled areas, and having bus stops made, I think that's important. And you talked about some method where you can determine the number of vehicles, so that it can cause the lights to change at different timing. I think something like that would be very important, because heading west, there are two intersections that I, I sometimes wait for the light to change twice before I can make a left turn.
Without doubt. Mr. Chair, we'll. Yeah, Frank, somebody else for you, if you don't mind, looking down the road here. Commissioner Petronell, then I'll get to you, Frank.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the, the property owners went in and got DOT permits for their curb cuts for the malls, for both malls, years ago. Can, can the DOT just unilaterally close those?
I don't know if somebody else here, who is more knowledgeable about this, can answer this question, but I don't believe so. I believe, oh, perfect.
So.
For the record, please, identify yourself, yeah.
Sharad Kaluri, I'm a PE, PTOE from CDM Smith.
Thank you.
Any access closures on existing curb cuts on 190 have to go through an encroachment permit process, that has to go to the district, and there needs to be a need to determine that the access should be closed. If it's going to create undue congestion on another driveway, typically, department won't close it until there's a real safety problem. So, let's say we were going with option A, and there's data behind saying this is a high-crash location, and there's very conflicts and concerns, the district will look at it, and that's how you go through that encroachment permit process to close that access.
So, the owners have really no say in if, if, if it's a, a, a health and safety hazard?
The owners could, that's up, if, it's really an access from a state highway, so DOT would have to be involved, it's not their private, it's a private driveway, but it's, it's on a state highway, so.
Okay.
If I can, if I can, John, so it would have to go through the, what's that commission again, OTSTA?
No, this one doesn't need to go through, no, it would go through district office, or what District 1 office in.
Okay, thanks, sorry, John.
Well, just another, another comment with that, you know, but, but by closing those, as Commissioner DeGrae had said, that it certainly would depreciate some of the businesses there that probably paid or got into high-end leases and so forth, this will change their outcome, they may have to close their businesses and so forth, I think that's where she was going with it.
Yeah.
I mean, I certainly agree that it creates a problem, but, you know, that's, I, I think it's kind of out of our, out of our purview. The, the, the other thing that I believe you had said that is, it's, it's out of the scope, but, you know, I travel at 91 to Elm Street daily, sometimes twice a day. 91, or Elm Street to 91 southbound, there, there's one left-turn lane to get on there, and then there's two bypassing lanes to go straight, you know? 85% of the cars turn left onto 91 southbound, and 15% of the cars go straight. So, you got two lanes going straight with no traffic, one lane turning left, and, and that in of itself creates a lot of backup, all the way back to McDonald's area, especially at, at rush hours at both, at both times of the day. You know, I, I always look at that, where, where there should be two left-hand turn lanes onto 91 southbound, and, and the other issue is 91 southbound coming down the, the ramp to Elm Street, because, because of the very tight ramps, how they are, and, and especially when tractor trailers are trying to make that turn, or almost turning out and coming back, you know, that, that whole intersection is in need of work, maybe, and as you say, I think it's outside the purview of what, what you're really looking at, but that creates a lot of backup that goes all the way back to McDonald's, and I certainly see you acknowledging that, 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 that's a problem, but I, I look at the intersection improvements that they did in Massachusetts, coming off the Mass Pike onto 291, and they took that ramp, and I travel that a lot, of course, I did it just today, but they, they took that ramp, and instead of making it a, a 90-degree turn and so forth, they, they moved, they moved the ramp out, and they, and they kind of curved it, so that, and then you got two lanes that, that kind of, and it curves and it bends, and it, it just flows that traffic so much better, and I see something like this being ideal for that, however, it gets expensive. You're talking about land purchase, Margaret Street, maybe, you know, land acquisitions and so forth, but, but that, that whole intersection, that 91 on-off ramps, they're just, they're just so tight to the highway themselves, they, they create a problem within itself, but, and, and I just see that being so much worse once the mall gets occupied with whatever it does. So, anyway, I, I think that that's. So, anyway, I think that that's, that would certainly be a good, a good benefit to do something of that sort. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chair, when we voted on this, we were presented with, I think, four options or five options and I think you asked us to pick two.
Pick two or three, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, we waited them.
Yeah, it's not like we had this hard, you know, vote on one or the other, but it was, it was a, you know...
Consensus.
And that's why they...
It was a consensus.
Right, and that's why they came back with the, when I would say tonight, the three options, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. If John's, if he's done.
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Just to follow up with Commissioner Holinsky, I agree with the safety, the public safety piece, but on the westbound entrance, I'm sorry, on the eastbound entrance, and we mentioned it before, if we get that whatever bus route or transportation corridor, looks like we're getting to train station, that promise is coming through, that money's coming, I think, that's going to be a route for it to take people out of Thompsonville into the mall. So to have that access point with that bus and then, you know, go around, flow back around, come back out, but I do agree, public safety is number one, but I'm just trying to think of the flow of how that'll go, but it looks like we're going to have something running from the train station to the mall in the near future.
Yep.
Oh, and one more thing, the red dot that, is that, is the red dot, that's on the highway exit, right, go up, that's the highway.
Yeah.
Somebody had represented before that that was the entrance to the mall.
No.
You know, I'm not saying 31 to 40 accidents is good, but just for the record, that's not, the red dot's not on that mall entrance.
Right. It is, many of these crashes at this interchange, intersection are related to congestion coming from.
And that goes along with my colleague over there, Commissioner Petronau was just saying, that's why that's a red dot. That's why both of those are a red dot.
Absolutely.
But he just said about 91.
Right. And you've got this existing bridge structure here that is very narrow, so any, any change such as the ones that you were speaking to would require, you know, significant modifications to that structure.
Yep, without doubt. So if I can, let me just gauge where we are here. Is everyone's questions pretty much, so I guess I'm going to cut through. If you can, synopsis here, what would you like us, I'm not sure we're ready to do anything tonight, but I know you're working, as you already said, with memo with staff and DOT or whatever, so can you outline to us the next steps? Do you want us to keep this, table this, to keep this item on our agenda for a while while you work with staff? I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Sure. So in order to write the memo that Patrick was referring to, to sort of move it to the next steps and identify, you know, potential as a project, we would need an endorsement from the town. So like CROG is, I think CROG creates that memo, but we do it in coordination with the town. So for them to do that, they would need some sort of endorsement from you. So I would anticipate, you know, if you have additional questions that you would like to have answered before you make that determination, again, you don't have to make any determination right now on A or B, it's so hypothetical and so dependent on what actually happens with the property, that's, I don't believe, critical to moving forward unless you wanted to put your weight as the board kind of behind something now, knowing that, again, that could change in the future depending on what happens. I think more it would be endorsing the recommendations that are otherwise in there regarding traffic signalization, pedestrian improvements, the elimination of the double left-hand turn that Carl was discussing, those kinds of items. I think that's what we would be looking to get from you all, again, via a resolution. One thing I also want to mention, I think it was discussed, but I just want to make sure that it's clear too, normally with a traffic impact study, you know, again, you have a developer, it's a private property owner coming before you with a very specific proposal of what they want to build and you're given, you know, the impacts of what that development is going to be and they're required to identify the mitigation that's required to offset the impact of their development. It is worth noting, just very clearly, if it hasn't been done already tonight, that because of how the numbers are being used, the assumption that the mall is at 100%, right, that's just how the traffic impact studies work, and then comparing that to the build scenario with the market study information that you see here, they are very similar technically. The reality is obviously very different versus what you see today. So what is required of a development is fairly minimal. I do think the market study, you know, build scenario is more. So just to emphasize that you sort of, we did go above and beyond that to kind of create a more pedestrian environment on Elm Street. And again, a lot of that can be achieved through the recommendations, the signalization and so on.
Okay, thank you.
And for that reason, we're calling them improvements and not mitigation, right? You know, we're not really mitigating the impacts of this development that's of a similar size to a full mall, right, to that point.
Okay, thank you.
I've got another comment, please, if you will, thanks. With respect to this traffic study, does this negate any traffic impact study that the mall may have to do in the near future if they're coming in with a development that is within the criteria that your market study shows? Or would they still have to do a traffic impact study for their own use?
That's a really good question and I would probably look to Lori and potentially the commission to decide.
Sorry, we need something else on this. So... Oh, sorry. So you want to know whether or not the traffic impact study can be utilized? Is that what you said?
Yeah, if...
If someone comes in and proposes this.
If the plan is going to go forward with this, it's option A, for instance, and then it's going to move forward and it may be ready to start construction and modifications in a couple of years. Well, in two years' time, the mall may come in with some development plan that is going to, let's say it meets this criteria that's on the screen with the apartments and the mixed use and so forth. It meets all of that, it's within that purview. Well, they have to do a traffic impact study because this impact study is based upon those numbers.
Right. So this is hypothetical and just like with many grants, you can, you have a study or you have a grant and then you use that for substantive information for the next grant or study. So this certainly can be utilized for any improvements that will be done in the future. However, no matter what goes in there, you're definitely going to need a new traffic study, you know, a traffic impact statement and this information certainly can be used for that. However, it will be based on whatever the proposal is at the time.
And that traffic study could change some of what this proposal may end up being?
Very possible.
I can take that too.
Sharad Kalori, again, from CDM Smith. So the way this works is the market study creates what's called trip generation, kind of tells us how much traffic would this site generate if this market study went forward. So the traffic study that we did is based off of that site traffic that we generated. So typically, if a mall, a site of this size has to go in front of the Office of State Traffic Administration at DOT and they would have to get approval. So typically what happens is if the trip generation number that they, let's say a developer comes in here and wants to build something different than what this market study says, and if the he or that person wants to build something more than what the market study says in terms of traffic, they would have to negate that impact beyond what this traffic study we did. If it's below, you can certainly request a traffic study anytime, but the access improvements could be modified as well. So from a OSTA standpoint where they have to get a permit, they would be fine if they're below this threshold value, but you may acquire just purely based on access requirements.
And one other thing, one other question for, for, well, no, I guess for the, for CROG was the, you're looking for an endorsement from the town and you refer to, you're referring to like us as the town, are we the sole agency that we're looking for a referral from or is the council involved in this at all? Are you relying on us as the agency to make that endorsement?
So you are the agency that signed on to this project, so you would be making the endorsement. It could be with comments or recommendations as well. So we would have that resolution for you probably at the next meeting with staff working with CROG and, you know, it's definitely coming from this agency.
Yeah, okay. Certainly we're not experts in traffic, but, you know, it's, it is what it is.
That's why we hire experts.
It's under our purview. Which leads me to where I was going to go, if everyone's all set.
Thank you, I'm all set.
Is I think basically what we want to do is I want to entertain them, I'm just going to talk out loud here what I would like to see. I would like to see us table this as an item on our, to keep it on our agenda, staff to start working on, have everyone, you know, think about some things and actually, as she was saying, if we have any other questions, we can get back then with some more questions and proceed with this at the next meeting. Maybe you guys can take a shot at some type of resolution, we can discuss that resolution, what we want to see for the adoption or whatever have you, a little bit more in detail, but I think we've probably, I don't want to say had enough tonight, but I think we've heard a lot of good information tonight, we can probably digest it and get back at the next meeting. Does that sound like a plan to everybody?
Yep.
So I'll entertain a motion that we table this item for the next meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record show that we're going to table this and thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I'm sure we're going to see you again, but thank you.
Thank you.
Why not?
I would also like to entertain a motion for a quick five-minute recess, please.
So moved.
Motion made by Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray to take a quick five-minute recess, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alex, we're recessing for five minutes, please.
Call the meeting back to order? Okay. Go ahead.
I'm all set. Under new business, Site Plan Review Number 1922, Mullen Road, application for site plan approval and associated improvements. Mullen Road Property Owner LLC, applicant owner, map 16, lot 3, I-1 zone.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, can you please take roll since we have, since the chairman has left?
Roll call first, please.
Okay. Okay, Linda DeGray?
Here.
I'm sorry, yeah, Lou Fiore is absent, he had left. Linda DeGray is here. Virginia Higley?
Here.
Frances Salimo?
Here.
Joseph Mulley?
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Here.
John Petronau is here. Christian Dantonio is the alternate. And Vincent Gorillo is absent as an alternate and Nicola Fakas is the other alternate.
Here.
Is here.
So who will be seated then?
Christian Dantonio.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Ken Slater. I'm a partner with the law firm of Halloran Sage and the chair of the Municipal and Land Use Group, work out of the Hartford office, although I also work out of our Springfield office and New Haven offices from time to time. With me is Michael Osgood, who is the Development Manager for GFI Partners, who'd be the developer of this project. And I will go through in a moment the cast that we have that you're going to hear from shortly, but want to thank staff. We've had two meetings in advance of filing the application and worked through a lot of wonderful commentary, things that we could do to improve the project before the application was filed and really want to thank them and compliment the professionalism of working with us in that, in that respect. The team that we're, that we have with us is Peter DiMali, who is the president and CEO and a professional engineer with Design Professionals, and also with Design Professionals, Jane Bluzak, a professional engineer, and a landscape architect, Glenn Martin. From Fussin' O'Neill, who'll handle the traffic engineering report will be Gina DiPasquale and with her... And a landscape architect, Glenn Martin. From Fussin' O'Neill, who'll handle the traffic engineering report will be Gina DiPasquale. And with her is Mark Vitucci. He may or may not chime in, but we're expecting Gina to do that presentation. And finally, George Felner is here, who will present for Felner Architects. And with that, I'll turn the floor to Mr. Osgood.
For the record, my name is Michael Osgood. I'm the Development Manager for the project. And ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, thank you for your time and consideration for the presentation that our team put together for you tonight. GFI is a full-service real estate development firm based out of Massachusetts. Our firm's expertise goes back over 25 years with more than $20 million square feet of commercial development across all asset classes. In particular, our focus is industrial real estate. GFI is actively permitting and constructing over 8 million square feet of A-class industrial space with multiple capabilities such as light manufacturing and warehouse distribution. GFI is a long-term holder of its assets and currently manages its 17 million square-foot portfolio. With our local approach, we are always committed to creating strong relationships with municipalities and drive economic growth for local and regional communities. Being able to attract businesses that will contribute to the economic development of Enfield is our goal. And we look to achieve that goal by building a state-of-the-art facility with modern specifications. So here you'll see a couple of our projects. GFI recently delivered two brand-new Class A facilities in Stratford and in Bloomfield. The one in Stratford is occupied by FedEx, while the one in Bloomfield is occupied by Pepperidge Farms. We're also currently under construction for another 230,000-square-foot facility in Stratford, which is expected to be delivered and completed upon, in Q2 of 2024. You'll also find a number of projects that we've completed in Connecticut, New Hampshire, New York, and Massachusetts. Next slide. So as for the project we're talking about today, this is on Mullen Road. Next slide. We currently own the site, which we acquired in March of this year. It's located on Mullen Road, just across from the National Guard facility. It's a 14.64-acre parcel of vacant, undisturbed land, which is currently zoned industrial one. We are proposing a 130,548-square-foot warehouse with 28 loading docks and two drive-in ramps. The market has seen an increased demand for these types of facilities, especially from Fortune 500 companies, for the small-to-midsized space. This building was also designed to attract small- to medium-sized businesses alike. This is a speculative development that we hope can break ground sometime next year. And as you can see, it's conveniently located between Exits 45 and 46 along 91, just off of King Street.
We're going to go to the next slide.
Yeah, just a second. You want me to click as you ask?
Yeah, we got it. Yeah, this will be the only one I'll be using in my presentation. Good evening, for the record, I'm Peter DiMali, I'm President and CEO of Design Professionals, just two towns to the south of here, right off of Route 5. Our office is at 21 Jeffrey Drive. We've been engaged by Michael Osgood and GFI Partners, of course, this applicant is an affiliate of GFI Partners, to design this project from perspective of civil engineering, landscape architecture, land surveying, and land planning. Land planning is my specialty. I've been former Director of Planning in a number of communities. So when we first broached this topic with Michael about this site, we tried to make it, it has some challenging features to it. We tried to make it the least intrusive development possible for warehouse-type development. And the site itself helped us do that. The Mullen Road is considerably higher than the development area we're going to have. So it's settled down, nestled into the site. We have some unique features here, including wooded area to the west between us and the R-33 residential land use area to the west along King Street and just east of that. So we take advantage of that forest area. So our buffer is, as Mr. Martin, Glenn Martin, our Senior Project Manager and Licensed Landscape Architect will tell you, we're taking advantage of that. So we're going to have first 50 feet of the buffer will be existing tree stand. And then beyond that, we're going to be creating a berm, taking advantage of the natural terrain where it drops off into our site and to help screen this facility from development to the west. And also, we're going to have additional planting materials, plant materials to the north side to screen it from the street. So we're nestling it in. It's great. We've looked at a number of different options, tried to get the sites to be balanced in terms of cuts and fills. We've done that, we've achieved that. So we don't have a lot of extra truck traffic during construction to bring in material or bring dirt out. So we think we've achieved that. The layout of the site I get to in a moment is, again, taking advantage of the natural attributes of the site. But it's designed so that we will have minimum intrusion of the surrounding area, streets and otherwise. You'll see, as Fussin' O'Neill's Representative Gina DiPasquale testifies later on, about how we listened to the town staff, were great during the administrative review team process and subsequent to that. We had a number of conversations between Lori and Matt, your professional planners, and also the public safety personnel, building safety, and other staff who are involved in engineering stuff. They were great, had great recommendations. We were able to employ most of those recommendations, and I think you're going to be satisfied with what we have. So physically, to get into the site, the truck traffic, tractor-trailers who serve a warehouse will be coming to and from the west. It's designed for that. Sinage and other techniques that have been deployed for the site plan. And even physically, the entrance drive, you see it's coming from the west and going out to the west. We're not, we're not going to accept truck traffic going to and from the east. There's no need for it. We want them to go to US Route 5, King Street, and we want them to go to the I-91 interchange at King Street to get back onto the highway. That's the purpose of this, this facility. We, we've also looked at how it's, when you hear Mr. Martin describe the landscape architectural aspects of this plan, the species he selected are those types of species that are not only just for screening the site in a beautiful fashion, but they also are for the natural environment, pollinators, and for habitat, natural habitat, nesting and other habitat for not only birds and mammals, but also insects and other things. So it's a great way that Mr. Martin and our other landscape architects described this. Incidentally, Barb Schmidt, who is another Licensed Landscape Architect with our firm, she's here. She's not expecting to testify. If you have any questions, she might be able to answer some, but she's with us. She's a lead accredited professional also. And our entire landscape architectural department, which consists of four landscape architects, really takes a look, serious look at what they select for plant materials and other features of the site as they go forward. Going over to the, and one other aspect is that, one reason this commission has designated this site for industrial development, in fact, it is to the north of us, on the other side of Mullen Street, to east and south, is because you want to encourage growth in your grand list, additional commerce. You want to have job growth, and you want quality development with the least amount of impact possible. I think you're going to find out from what we're presenting tonight, this particular development proposal will have very limited impact on the area and on the community, and I think you're going to be pleased with the outcome of it. Let me go over to some of the features of the site. Use the cursor here. Okay, so, let me get a split screen, okay? Dual screen. So here's our 130,000-plus-square-foot warehouse building, north-south access, right in the middle of the site. It's about elevation 160, the floor elevation, considerably lower than Mullen Road up to the north, and also the residential neighborhood to the west. Natural features, we're dropping it way down into the site, and yet it's flat around here so we can have loading docks, safe areas, and stuff like that. As you're entering the site from Route 5, from I-91, the tractor-trailer rigs will come enter, and then they'll go in a counterclockwise fashion, all the way around the north side of the building, down the west side of the building, and the south side of the building. And on the east side of the building, which is in the opposite direction from the residential areas far to the west of us, is the loading court, the truck court area. And that enables the driver not to make blindsided docking maneuvers, which you want to avoid. That's mean where they can't see exactly what they're backing into. From their window, they can see, and they're using their mirrors, they can see exactly what they're backing into, least chance for conflict internally on the site. So that's why we tried to do this, that's why we're doing the counterclockwise motion, and there'll be blindside parking. We have 100, we are required to have 104 parking spaces. We have 105. We have 64 parking spaces immediately on the right as you enter the site, and then another 41 along the face of the building, which is where the entrances to, the two entrances building at the northwest corner and also at the southwest corner to the building are. There's potential this will be split into two tenancies. That's the expectation now, but there's a possibility it still could be a single tenant. As Mr. Osgood indicated, we're, they're doing this building on speculation at this point. They don't have a designated tenant, but the market is good enough, and they have a command of that marketplace that we fully expect that they will find a quality tenant that town can be proud of. In front of those entrances in the west side of the building is a parking area, as I mentioned, with 41 parking spaces. And within that, and Mr. Martin will elaborate on that, we're going to have EV charging stations, two different areas of that, a number, large number of them, accessible and conventional. And Mr. Martin will address that. Here's the area on the west side. Again, I mentioned 50 feet of natural trees stand, which will remain. And then we're going, in this area here, to the east of that, between our development and the tree stand, within the 100-foot buffer, we're going to have a wide variety of plant materials, trees and shrubs, to screen the site, but also help for the natural environment with the woods behind it and all the flora and fauna there. So I think that's an important component. In the northern part of the site, we're going to have a tank, which is approximately 32 to 33 feet in height, hasn't been fully designed yet. Your fire safety people indicate that they'd like to have that finalized, the fire suppression system, fire hydrant locations, and also the design components of that system be designed in cooperation with them after we go through the planning, zoning commission process. So that's about a roughly 30,000-gallon tank right there. That is being screened, and as Mr. Martin will address it, fully screened from the street and also screened from the residential area to the north, to the west by our buffer. And the buffer will also have a berm in it that Mr. Martin will discuss. And of course, that area is higher than our floor elevation, so the building is settled down in there. So we also have some propane tanks in the southwest corner and an area here. Our dumpsters will, expected to be inside the building, there are two ramps, one on the north side of the truck court, one on the south side, expect to be inside in non-winter conditions. There's a possibility that may consider putting it out here in a paved area next to the propane tanks, which is necessary for servicing the tanks. But we also have potential that they, a tenant may wish to have at a loading dock, give up a loading dock for purpose of having a dumpster for service. We have plenty of area for the truck court here for the 28 loading docks, as Mr. Osgood mentioned. A couple of things with respect to the site, so it, the highest point is up northwest corner, upper-left corner, and then the lowest is the southeast corner. Mr. Bluzak will, our Director of Engineering, will review that as part of his presentation. But other aspects and natural of the site, our client engaged JMM Wetlands Consulting out in Newtown, Connecticut, Jim McManus, who evaluated the entire site, and there are no wetlands whatsoever on the site. So we're free and clear of that. That was good news to our client and to the design team. And also, they engaged Dr. Mark Banks from Weetog Section of Simsbury, Connecticut, was whom we worked extensively in the past. And he did an archaeological study in consultation with State Historic Preservation Office, and he determined there were no archaeological resources on the site of any substantive nature, and it's not a factor in our development of the site. We also looked at it from perspective of zoning. And of course, again, as your staff have informed, it's been zoned industrial for quite some time. We have, we're far lower than your maximum for impervious coverage and building coverage with the building. We're way under those requirements. We have a building that's about 44 feet 5 inches, if I recall correctly, in height, but you allow for that if the building is set back considerably from your yards, and we've done that, and we're way beyond the requirements for that. So we're in good shape with that respect. It'll be, of course, a one-story building. We also have, and as Attorney Slater indicated, the town staff, we went to the Administrative Review Team on two occasions, but the town staff have been available throughout the whole process, and they've been terrific, reaching out to us on comments and recommendations and give and take, both your planners in particular, other staff members, and it's been terrific. So Mr. Davis, Matt Davis, one of your professional planners here, reached out to us with some recommendations with respect to the southeast corner of the site, the eastern part of the site, the property to the east of us, and Mr. Slater will be commenting on that from a legal perspective too, but the property to the east of us, 18 Mullen Road, which is a mulch facility, as I understand it, they, they have, they encro, when they developed their site, they encroached into our property with their drainage system, the swale for their drainage, and also their discharge point. They have a point source of discharge in the southeast corner of our site into riprap, where all of our water goes anyways. And that's on our site, and that was, that's been acknowledged. But Mr. Davis has recommended that we, that our client, GFI Partners and their affiliate, Mullen Road Property LLC, they will grant an easement to the butter, to memorialize that, and also recognize it fully, so that they have continuing rights to use that. And we're going, as Mr. Bluzak will mention, we're going to tie into that for our final point of discharge, because that's where the water's going anyways. And we're not increasing the flow of water, as Mr. Bluzak will get into that detail, level of detail. Another thing that was brought to our attention, we had seen that on the plans, but in terms of regulatory perspective by Mr. Davis, when the abutting property to the east was developed, they also had encroached on the open space easement area, with about 90 feet of open space easement on the south side, that was encroached on. The commission approved, I think, a little bit over to the east, but it was built a little bit into our property. So he's suggested to us that we apply to this commission as a condition of approval. We apply to you to formalize that. You have the ability to allow for, as you already did with the prior applicant, for encroaching on the easement. You can waive that requirement for drainage and the like. So we will actually, our clients agree to apply for that, to memorialize it and have input from you on that, because it's a done thing and it should be done, even though our client had nothing to do with it whatsoever. So I think that's it. So you have the order of the speakers?
I do, but I'll just add for Ken Slater again, to what was just mentioned.
Excuse me, sir. Could you turn the mic, or you could use the handheld one?
No problem.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The, the open space easement that was encroached upon by our neighbor, the prior owner indicated that they had no issue with that, and a written letter was submitted that there wasn't a concern with that encroachment. But this application presented an opportunity, and your staff has recommended, and we agree to the condition, that that be formalized in the nature of an easement. And so I can put on the record that I spoke with the principal of the neighbor, Brennan Sheehan, and mentioned to him that the recommendation that was being made that would be incorporated in a condition of approval would be that an easement be established so that they would have the right to maintain those, that swale on our property, and that we in turn would present that application as was indicated. In the, in the actual easement document itself, this commission has given authority to allow certain activities to happen in the open space. So we'll formalize that as a condition of approval, get the easement that we would be able to record, and we would record that after presumably you'd approve the application that we would submit under the requirements of that open space easement. And I think that your next speaker, you tell me based on the next slide.
Jim Bluzak, our Director of Engineering, is a Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, everyone. Good to see some familiar faces here.
Good to see some familiar faces here. I'll be going through this, our site development plans briefly. Starting here with existing conditions, as Peter said, we have a 14 and a half acre parcel. It slopes from northwest to southeast. There's some contour lines on there, for you to see. The parcel now is an open field in the front, kind of unkept, with some light woods and brush on the rest of our property. Again, Peter had mentioned with the wetlands where we had JNM go, JMM go out there, and there are no wetlands. Also, we had Wealthy Associates and GEI do geotechnical investigations out there, so we have boring information about the material and its ability to support the building and the other improvements. And also, an archaeological study was done, and no, no assessment, I'm sorry, no resources were found. All right. How do we click this?
I just roll.
Oh, roll, okay. We're rolling. Back one, okay. So this is our development site. Peter had also mentioned that, because we have this slope from, from upper left to lower right, it's about a 40-foot change in elevation. So what we did, we, on our plan here, our grading plan, is we, we had a balanced cut and fill, so we're not going to be looking to haul out hundreds and trucks of fill out of there or bring it in. So we've used all the material onsite to balance it out and create this flat platform for our development. In order to achieve that, there are three retaining walls on the site, basically around the entrance driveway, and on the lower side facing the property to the east, will be a retaining wall there as well. The drainage is shown here, all the drainage is caught in catch basins. All these catch basins have sumps, the catch debris and sediment. All that rainwater from the roof and from the parking lot all goes into underground storage. You see there on the right-hand side, we have approximately 366 units, underground storage units. They comprise of about 2.3 acre feet of storage, so it's quite, quite a bit of underground storage. Impressive. So, and those units themselves are eight feet wide by five feet high, each individual unit. From there, the water leaves that storage device at a controlled rate and exits to the southeast corner of the property, and I'll, we'll go a little further into this on the next slide.
You ready for it?
I am, thank you. All right. So this, this is, this slide shows existing drainage areas of the property, of the parcel now, breaking her up into four areas. We'll start at the top. E4 is the field that comes off that upper right-hand corner. E1 is the center of the park, it comes down and enters into this existing swell that the neighbor has created. There's a riprap basin there, that's kind of the low point of the whole property, that's where the water goes now. E2 is a wooded area that drains to the south as well, and works its way over to the same swell I just mentioned. E3, up in the upper left-hand corner, is a small area, that's basically the top of the hill, which slopes back towards the residential, that, as you said, goes, as I said, goes to the, to the west. So after, after development, we just quickly go here, the large part of the, of the development takes up what they call P5, Proposed Area 5. So that water, as I talked about, goes all in the catch basins, it goes into our underground storage, and then it's released into that same swell in the lower corner, lower right, right-hand corner. Area P4, which, which went to the, the property to the, to the east, is greatly reduced, so it still flows that way, but it's a much smaller amount of water than was presently coming off there. Same thing with P3, the water that left to the west into the residential area, again, that area is reduced, because we were doing a little grading into that hill and reducing that area. P2 to the, to the south gets a little smaller as well, P5 eats up some of that, and it also enters, exits out to the southeast corner to the existing swell. Just, just for some quick number purposes, because of these reductions in sizes, overall, what we're putting into the swell on a 50-year storm, 50-year rainstorm, is about a 3% reduction in flow. So we've achieved less than what was coming off there now in our development. And elsewhere on P4, because we've taken away some of that area, that reduction is 90%. We've reduced 90% of the flow coming off that corner. At P3, 17% reduction in the water that goes off to the residential side, and then P2 is about a 12%, 12% reduction of flow to that area. All right. Next, we'll kind of go over the utilities proposed. The only, we have one sore connection here to an existing manhole that's shown in green. It's going to be a forced, forced main system. The only flow we have coming from this building, it's a, it's a distribution center, I mean, sorry, warehouse, is a couple bathrooms for the employees, so it's very minimal flow. So that'll be gathered in basins outside the building and then pumped up to that manhole. We did receive one comment from the WPCA, asking for a certain kind of connection in that manhole, and we'll, we'll make sure that that gets incorporated into the plans, as well as going to be a condition of the WPCA's permit to construct. Water line, the existing water line in Mullen Road will be tapped into to provide domestic water, that'll just be a one-inch line, and then also a eight-inch line to feed the fire suppression system, which includes a tank, about a 30,000-gallon tank that Peter had mentioned earlier. And hydrants, in going through our ART meetings with the Fire Marshal, locations of hydrants and fire lanes, he has to be determined at the time of construction. So we, we heard his comments, and we're open to that, as, as we go forward, we'll, we'll make the hydrants where he wants to put them. That's it for that slide. And the last I have here is the ENS plan. So quite simply, we'll follow the 2002 Connecticut ENS manual standards we will be applying for, and updating the ship, ship, I'm sorry, we call it Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, that'll be filed with the DEP, once, before construction has started. But their typical ENS details will be silt fence and hay bales, a tracking pad for the entrance, and a temporary sediment basin located in that lower corner to protect the swell, the, sorry, the gravel, I'm sorry, the riprap swell and leak-off area in that southeast corner, which all the flow goes through now, and we want to make sure during construction, we're not damaging that area. Okay? And this time, I'm going to hand it off to Glenn Martin, who is our landscape architect. Thank you.
For the record, Glenn Martin with Design Professionals. I'm a landscape architect, and I'll review the landscape plan with you. We are providing shade trees in the proposed parking area on the west side of the building, in this parking area over here. These trees will be honey locusts and little leaf lindens. The trees will provide shade for that parking area. We're also providing evergreen shrubs and flowering perennials at the ends of each, at the ends of the parking area, there, and to the north right there. Additional shade trees are also proposed in the islands at the loading dock. So we have a couple of shade trees on the north and the south, here, there, near the loading dock. Shade trees are also proposed at the northern parking lot, this upper lot here. These trees will be honey locusts and little leaf lindens and maples. Evergreen junipers are proposed in the parking lot, interior islands, and at the ends of the parking lot. We are proposing to screen the fire suppression tank with evergreens at the top of the slope here. These trees are spruce and fir trees, which will provide a dense screen. Some existing vegetation along the road in front of the tank will also remain to help screen the fire tank and the parking lot. So some of that existing vegetation along the road here will remain for additional screening. There is a 100 landscape buffer along the western property line. The existing trees will remain in the first 50 feet of the buffer along the property line. The remaining 50 feet will be planted with a proposed mix of shade trees, evergreens, and shrubs on an eight-foot-high berm. So here's the 100-foot buffer, and the 50 feet, the first 50 feet will be the existing vegetation, and the 50 feet to the east will be proposed vegetation. These trees in the proposed area will include oaks, maples, and birch. Ornamental trees will include magnolia, cervus period dogwoods. Evergreens are also proposed. Evergreens include spruce, arborvitae, and fir. In addition to the trees, native shrubs are also proposed among the trees. They include bayberry, viburnum, rhododendron, and mountain laurel. These plantings will provide an effective screen in the proposed development from the adjacent residences. These shrubs and trees will also be beneficial to pollinators and a good food source for birds and other wildlife. A metal mix is also proposed at the northwestern area of the development. So this big area here will be a metal mix. The native seed mix has a variety of wildflowers and grasses, which will include many plants for pollinator habitat. Is also, it also provides seed food source for birds and other wildlife. We have provided a section at the midpoint of the new building, as you can see here, and it runs all the way down to King Street. The section shows the 100-foot buffer at the top of the section there. So you have the existing vegetation here on the left, and the proposed vegetation, their mature size on the right. And the, the building is set quite a bit lower than that area right here. The top of the berm will be, the eight-foot-high berm will be approximately 20 feet higher than the finished floor elevation proposed. It's quite a bit lower than the, the buffer. And as you can see, the existing grade falls way down to King Street, which helps with the buffering of the proposed building. I'll move on to lighting next. The parking areas, areas, loading dock and driveways will be lighted with LED lighting. We are proposing pole-mounted lights in the northern parking area and along the perimeter of the driveways. These fixtures will be 25 feet high and have a slim profile. These fixtures will be dark sky and full cutoff fixtures, and you can see the fixtures here on the right, very modern slim profile. And the rendering shows the location of the light poles, the highlighted areas of the light poles. Lighting wall packs are also proposed on the building to light the parking area adjacent to the building, and also on the loading dock side. These will also be a slim profile and dark sky, full cutoff fixtures. As Peter mentioned earlier, we are proposing 105 parking spaces, 41 adjacent to the building here, and 64 in the northern parking lot. And as part of that parking, we're proposing EV, electric vehicle charging stations. Those will be EV-ready. 11 of those are proposed, six at the northern part of the parking lot, and five at the lower part of the parking lot.
At this, at this time, I'll turn things over to Gina Di Pasquale from Fussin O'Neil
Good evening. My name is Gina Di Pasquale. For the record, I'm from Fussin O'Neil with the address of 146 Hartford Road in Manchester, Connecticut. So to give a perspective, as referenced by the other members, the intersection area that we reviewed is the intersection of King Street at Mullen Road, in addition to the proposed site driveway location at the intersection with Mullen Road. The existing conditions for the traffic impacts were collected by traffic counts and speed data that were taken on May 11th, 2023. The counts were performed at Mullen Road at Route 5, and the speed data was taken along the site frontage. The peak hours for the traffic were 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And in consultation with the Connecticut Department of Transportation, the traffic volumes were grown to the 2024 background year by a 0.7% growth rate. The trip generation was calculated utilizing the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. This is an industry standard for trip generation, and we utilized the land use code associated with warehousing for the development. The development is a low-traffic generator. In total, the 130,548-square-foot warehouse will generate 39 vehicle trips in the morning peak hour, and 42 vehicle trips during the afternoon peak hour. Given the use onsite, most, if not all, of the vehicle trips will come from Route 5 or I-91, and turn right into the site and exit left out of the site. With that in mind, to be conservative in our analysis, we estimated approximately 10% of the total vehicles will turn right out of the site driveway. If that total does happen to amount to 10%, it will total one and three passenger vehicles turning right out of the site in the morning and afternoon respectively. For the capacity analysis onsite, we compared the background condition, which is without the proposed development, versus the combined condition, which includes the proposed development, and it yielded efficient operations that were maintained at King, the King Street at Mullen Road intersection and site driveway to efficiently operate in the combined condition. The Q increases averaged one vehicle or less in total throughout the roadway network. From a safety perspective, stopping site distance was measured at the proposed site driveway location. Stopping site distance is the distance associated with a vehicle approaching the site driveway, and the distance necessary for that vehicle to brake and stop safely prior to seeing a vehicle exit out of the proposed site driveway. And the stopping site distances were adequate based on the Connecticut Department of Transportation standards for safe stopping site distance. In addition, we analyzed the crash analysis for the intersection of King Street at Mullen Road, in addition to the space between King Street and the proposed site frontage, and it yielded no abnormal crash patterns. This also does include the intersection with the neighboring National Guard facility. Their site driveway is within that roadway area. In regards to recommendations, our team met with the town for the administrative review meeting, in addition to a separate meeting with Sergeant Matthew Meyer on July 31st, from the Enfield Police Department, to review traffic recommendations. Sergeant Matthew Meyer concurred that with the following recommendations, the site will be able to provide safe access into and out of the site driveway. The recommendations, as some of my other colleagues had mentioned, include the installation of trucks no right turn, and directional signage indicating two US-5 and I-91 signage to be posted at the driveway exit. In addition, there is also an existing trucks entering sign that's utilized by the National Guard approaching the site driveway, approaching the National Guard driveway, my apologies. And it's connected to the gate at the National Guard facility, so when the gate goes up, the flashing lights begin indicating to vehicles approaching that there is a vehicle entering this, the network. As part of our recommendations, the developer is planning to include connection either by loop or video detection to tie into that flashing sign, and if the sign's not capable of feeding two feeds, then the developer will install a new sign. In conclusion, the proposed on- and off-site improvements will provide overall safe operations for vehicles accessing the site, and as previously mentioned, our team did meet with Sergeant Matthew Meyer, who concurred that with the recommendations, the development will not have a significant impact on the adjacent roadway network. I'll be available for questions at the end, but at this time, I'm going to turn it over to George to review the architecture.
For the record, I'm George Felner. For the record, I'm George Felner from Felner Architects. We're located in East Hattam, Connecticut. So what I'm going to do is describe the building for you. So we'll start with the floor plan. And on the floor plan, you can see that it's, it's 506 feet long by 258 feet deep, which gives you a total of 130,000, 130,548 square feet. So this is designed as a pre-engineered steel frame construction. And you can see there's, there's a lot of bays. There's nine bays wide by five bays deep for the structural steel system. In the bottom corner of, and you can see on the floor plan are the tenant office spaces, which has 1,763 square feet at each end. You can see what, as I'm pointing it out. There's also a potential demising wall, which you see located here, in case there's two tenants. And as you may have heard earlier, it has a 36-foot-high clear interior height. So moving on to the exterior elevations, just as a, as a starting point, we're looking at a 45-foot-high average height of the walls, talking from average grade. And starting at the top with, with the west elevation, you can see the office storefront on, on the far left and the far right, which has the, the main entries. And there's a couple of additional egress doors in between. You can barely see it here from that scale. Also, at the office storefronts on either, on each end, there is a five-foot-deep aluminum canopy, which is supported by diagonal hanger rods. So that gives a sense of entry and also protection from weather. And so then, moving on down to the, the east elevation directly below that, you can see that's where, first of all, the finished floor is four feet above grade. So you have, you know, it's typical for this type of, of a building to have that when the trucks pull up. There are 28 truck bay overhead doors, which are nine feet wide by 12 foot high. And in addition to that, there are two drive-in truck bay overhead doors, which are larger. They're 12 foot wide by 14 foot high. And there's a few egress doors in between, and you can see the man, man doors. The north and the south elevations have a couple of egress doors. You can see two on, on the north elevation and one on the south elevation. So while we're looking at the elevations, we'll talk about the exterior materials. Starting out, you can see on each one of these is a dark band going all the way across on all four of these. And what that is, is a 10-foot-high base wall consisting of split-phase concrete block of gray. And this serves as a banding, which effectively acts as a visual grounding of the building to the site. And above that, we have insulated metal panel system, two-tone. Most of it is slate gray. That's what you see for the majority of the, of the facade. But on the articulated accent areas of the entries, that, that will have a different color to differentiate. That will be a stone gray. And then, and of course, we have the aluminum storefront system with glass panels and doors, which you can see I'm pointing here and, and here where that is happening. For the, for the roof, it's a standing seam metal panel roofing system at, with a low pitch. And above each of the egress doors, we have a D-series sized two LED wall lumineers. They, they're, they have a curved top configuration. They're dark sky cutoff, just to give enough light for safety for, for all the entries and egress. Moving then to the final slide of my presentation are the renderings. So you can see in the 3D renderings, a series of aerial viewpoints, which, which can, which express the form, the material, the color contrasts, the entry elements, and so on. But essentially, it shows the context of the site layout in terms of the parking, the truck bays, and so on, and especially the balanced relationship with the landscape. You heard a lot about the landscape design, which is very effectively and sensitively designed for the site. And so you can see that with these renderings. Essentially, the, the design is coherent with the industrial design vocabulary for warehousing and distribution facilities, and it complies with the intent and the requirements of the zoning regulations. And that is, that ends my presentation.
Thank you, George. And so I will just conclude by thanking everyone. We believe, Mr. Oscar has put an excellent team of professionals together to demonstrate what your commission requires. It established this as an industrial one-zone where warehousing is a permitted use subject to site plan review. And we believe we've gone through again, with the help of the ART meetings that were held before and in consultation with town staff, a plan that fully complies with your regulations. But we want to provide an opportunity, if you ask any questions for, from anyone from our team, if you have any.
Commissioners have any questions? Ken?
Yes, I have some questions about the traffic. Concerned about two things. One is the, and this may not actually be a traffic question, but is the turning radius onto Mullen Road? Mullen Road is a fairly, fairly narrow road, two-lane road. Is there adequate turning radius for the large trucks to get through there?
I'm going to defer to Jim.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's not really traffic. I do have a traffic question, too.
How you doing? Yeah, so we go back on the site plan, and you can see, I just realized I can drive the mouse from here. So you can see how we flare it out. It's flared out quite a bit to the left to facilitate that left-hand turn onto Mullen Road. So trucks will be coming in and out from, from this side.
Would you anticipate a number of, like, two trucks at a time, one coming in, one coming out, one going out? Or?
I will not. No, I don't, I don't anticipate that.
Okay, okay. Because as I said, you know, if, if Mullen Road was a four-lane road, it would be great, right? But, okay, so, but as far as the traffic, then, okay. So thank, so what is the, is there extra radius above and beyond what would be required by design?
It's, it's based on the largest vehicle that would, would be there. So I think, I think it's a 53-foot or 60-foot trailer that tells us the radius, and then that's the radius we use. So it's, it's plenty big enough. It's not.
Okay. So you, so you're at, you're at the exact radius. You didn't provide any.
Yeah, but those are pretty, pretty, you know, pretty aggressive radiuses. It's not too tight.
Okay. Thank you. My other concern about the traffic is a backup on the intersection of Route 5 and Mullen Road. Okay. Now, you said, you said it was like, it's a one-car backup, or, you know, or one-vehicle I think Route 5 in that area can get pretty busy during commuter times. And I'm just concerned we're going to have two or three trailer trucks stacked up at the Route 5, mainly exiting. And I was not as concerned about entering from the right, from the right-hand turn entrance. But I'm concerned about when they leave, the left-hand turn to make their way down to the, the prior I-91 exit. So I just, I can just envision that during the morning peak period or the end-of-day peak period, that you'd have backup three, four trucks there. Okay? So if you might speak to that?
Absolutely. So the queues that we analyzed are for what is on the network today. And then in excess of that, so the proposed development will, and we anticipate less than one vehicle length in addition for queue. So the overall queuing on, at that intersection will result, over the course of the peak period, so that's the morning and afternoon peak commuter times, when the majority of vehicle traffic are on the roadway network, we're seeing that less than one vehicle increase at that time. So it's largely sustaining the existing volumes that are there and the existing queues that will be on the network and not exasperating them in any particular fashion. We would see a slight increase associated with that, less than one vehicle addition.
Okay. So, but I think you stated there are, like, during the morning peak period, you're expecting 39 trucks?
So that's 39 total vehicle trips.
Okay. So it's not trucks?
That's a combined entering and exiting.
Okay.
And I can give you the.
And it's 42, I think, in the afternoon, something like that?
So in the morning, we're looking at 39 total vehicle trips, and that's 30 entering and nine exiting. And then in the afternoon, it's 42 total vehicle trips, 12 entering and 30 exiting.
Okay. So the 30 exiting, but that's a combination of trucks and cars?
Yes.
Okay.
Total vehicle trips.
All right. Okay. And could you reiterate again the number of left turns expected onto Route 5 and the number of right turns?
Absolutely. So we anticipated, for the sake of the analysis, that 90% of vehicles will be turning left towards Route 5 and I-91, and then 10% would be turning right. So that amounts to, if you'll give me one second just to... So in the morning, that amounts to nine vehicles turning left out of the site driveway? I'm sorry, my apologies. Eight vehicles turning left out of the site driveway in the morning, and 27 vehicles turning left out of the site driveway in the afternoon, over the course of that full hour.
So assuming there is a volume of traffic on Route 5, I'm having trouble understanding why only one queue increase. Okay?
So in, in general, it's over the course of the full peak hour. So in the afternoon, that is that four-to-five PM peak hour. So not all of the 27 trucks are exiting at one time. They're periodic based on the, the timeframe of the loading and unloading and exiting the site. So we're seeing more of a periodic standpoint for vehicles exiting. It's not all of the 27, which would result in a much larger queue.
Yeah, but it's one every couple of minutes, right?
Right. And then they approach the signal and they're seeing, we're seeing, on average, less than one full vehicle length of queue associated with that based on the cycle of that location.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You all set?
Yep.
Anyone else on this side? Commissioner Petronasla?
Yeah. Traffic and stay, I got, I'll start with. I'll start with the question on the traffic. The King Street, southbound, left turn onto Mullen Road, you're not calling, so you're not calling for any intersection improvements, correct?
That is correct.
And the, does your traffic study report show an amount, any amount of tractor-trailers taking that route currently?
Our, the traffic study accounts for existing roadway network interchanges. So essentially, vehicles that were on the roadway were counted on the, I believe it was May 11th.
Yeah.
So any vehicles that were on the network that day were accounted, were accounted for. That does include anything from trucks or any vehicles.
It doesn't designate, there's so many tractor-trailers, so many cars, and so forth.
Right.
That's okay. The, you know, having traveled that road two to five times a day, the, the mulch distributor down the street is, is many, many trucks, tractor-trailer, all tractor-trailers probably, probably generates as, as much traffic as, as a facility such as this, maybe more. He's got a lot of tractor-trailers there, and they're constantly going. And I'm constantly getting behind them when they're turning left onto Mullen Road from southbound Route 5. And, and that traffic is always backing up, waiting for the truck to make the left turn. Because basically, what they do is, I mean, they're, they're general, they generally veer to the right so they can make the left-hand turn nice and wide and so forth. So there's, so there's not really a bypass lane. I was looking at your traffic study report where you, based upon the size of the road, I think you're anticipating, that, that's not a problem because it's wide enough for bypass. I, I disagree with that flatly, only because I deal with it two to five times a day. And, and I, and it seems like I'm, half the time at least, I'm behind one of those tractor-trailers turning, and it does back up there. And, and if there is a little bit of room to get by it, a lot of people in front of me won't take it because it's just a little bit tight. So, you know, I, I, I always saw the need of a bypass lane or a little bit of a widening or left-hand turn lane, if you will, designated left-hand turn lane. So that's just my two cents. I'm not a traffic engineer, and I, I want to tell you your business. I'm just telling you my experience in dealing with it all the time. And, and sometimes it is frustrating, and then this is only going to add or double the, the amount of tractor-trailers making that left-hand turn lane and so forth. I don't know if you have any comment on that?
So with that in mind, due to the size of this facility, this will also be submitted for an OSTA administrative decision review. And at that time, the state will also look at our proposed traffic for the roadway network. It is worth noting that the threshold to review intersections by the state includes either 100 vehicle trips to a specific intersection or 50 left turns. So with that in mind, like, this facility in specific doesn't necessitate a review, but we've included it for the purpose of, of everybody to see it here, in addition to doing due diligence on the site. But they'll have the opportunity also to review it from a state intersection perspective to see if any bypass would be needed at that time.
Yeah. When, when a mulch company started, they had, you know, maybe six, eight tractor-trailers. They probably have 30 now. And that's over the last, you know, eight to 10 years, thereabouts. So it's, it's, there's a lot of traffic going on with, with, with that operation within itself. So just my two cents. Other comments that I have, not traffic-related. The, the fire suppression tank, I noticed, I couldn't find what, what the, I guess, finished floor of the tank is and what the top of the tank elevations are. I, I didn't notice, note, see anything noted on the plans for that. I, I think someone had said that, that the top, that the tank's about 32 or 33 feet tall. Is that, is that correct? And, and what's the diameter? I couldn't find the diameter on that.
For the record, Jim Luzak with Design Professionals. You're correct. 32 feet high. And that's based on a three, I'm sorry, 30,000-gallon tank, which is, was given to us from the developer who used that same tank, the same system, on a different development. So that tank is, I think it's probably 12 feet in diameter, 30, 32 feet high.
I get a question for staff through the chair. With, with respect to that, there's no dimension on it, on the plane that I, that I saw. Shouldn't there be something noted if, if we're going to prove something? Meaning, what, what if it comes in and it's 40 feet tall, or they built something 40 feet tall? What's your, what's your thought on that, Matt?
The note that I had from the fire marshal, which earlier was today, this afternoon, was that the final design, the capacity, the dimensions, will be done when they design the sprinkler system. And until they do those calculations, they really can't know. So what we have is what we have. The other thing I would say, though, is that I think our zoning regulations allow for accommodations for these types of structures that are somewhat different than what we would do for a, a building, so to speak. So there's some recognition in regulations, I think, that these, these types of structures, on occasion, will be a bit higher. We can take a look at it post-approval, and if the, if the change is like an order of magnitude, we can probably ask if they would embellish landscaping to some degree. Or maybe there's a way that you can change the geometry of the tank so it's broader instead of higher, if that's a concern, if the heights are a concern. I'm sure there's... instead of higher, if that's a concern, if the heights are a concern. I'm sure there's some options out there that way.
Yeah, I saw, it was noted, it's going to be 12 feet in diameter and 33 feet tall, so...
Right. That might have something to do with the pressure in the water column for the sprinklers. I don't know. I, I'm not a sprinkler guy, so...
Well, it's usually supported by a pump, so, and that's what the little house structure is, I think, on the south end of it, I think, I would assume.
I mean, I would prefer to have the hydrants located. I'd prefer to have, you know, the size of the water lines determined. I'd prefer to have all of those details. Sometimes, at this point in the process, some of those things, just, we're not able to kind of nail those down. It's kind of like the retaining wall conversation we had with another application a little while ago. A little bit different, but...
It is, it is in the front yard. Understood, it's kind of sitting down in a hole a little bit. They've done a pretty good job with screening it and so forth, so it's not really that visible. I don't think a little bit for the screening to mature and so forth, but I guess we'll just have to put our faith, if approved, put our faith in, you know, in when that comes in, to make sure it's reviewed, that it's not, you know, crazy, or, you know...
Right. I mean, it's, it's 32, I think someone said?
Yeah.
32. So, if there's, and is there a comfort level that, you know, in terms of a deviation, if it goes to 40, is that sufficient, or do you, is there a... I mean, I can imagine if it went to, you know, from 32 to like 52, that would be a considerable change, and that might be a concern. But I can't imagine a few feet...
I'm seeing the top of, the top of the slope up there, about 180, and the bottom is 162. So, you know, it is sitting down in a hole, and then heavy screening and so forth. So, if it's 30 feet tall, or thereabouts, you know, it's certainly within reason, something a little bit above that, I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't have a problem with that. I don't know if anybody else does.
As long as it's, you know, conifers, or, you know, some type of, you know, the screen's going to be there throughout the winter season, type of thing, so...
Okay. Yeah, and I, and I think you're right. I think we went through some, some things with, in the industrial park, with a tenant over there, about some tanks outside, tanks and silos, and so forth, that we have some leeway with.
Commissioner Petronella?
Yeah.
I think Mr. Osgood might have had something else to add on that, and to address your concerns.
For the record, Michael Osgood. We just completed a facility in Bloomfield, very similar. That was 180,000-square-foot facility, and the fire pump tank, we modeled that off of what we developed today. And that tank was about 32 foot in height, and it was 30,000 gallons in capacity. It's an ESFR system in the building itself. So, with that, you know, we now have a smaller building at 130,000 square feet. So, we expect it to be, you know, somewhere in that range. But again, with a smaller building, the probability of having a tank even smaller than what's depicted is, you know, a likely outcome.
All right. Thank you. On CSP 1, you're showing that your truck dock stalls at 60 foot deep. I mean, typically, a trailer, a long trailer's 53 feet, plus the tractor-trailer, so they're 75 feet. Is that sufficient? Does that work, that 60 feet?
I'm going to defer to the engineers on that question.
And another engineering question is, there's, there's three major retaining walls, and they say "by others." I'm not sure I understand what that's supposed to mean.
Okay.
Is there another party involved that's going to be responsible for that?
Yes. Jim Luzak, for the record. To answer your first question, yes, there's plenty of room for the backing in. It's not a high-speed turn. These are slow movements. But to answer your question regarding retaining walls, the reason why he says "by others" is that building code requires that to be permitted as a building, through a building permit process. So, the design of the wall, we may, we may say is a retaining wall. So, we, as, from a site development engineer, we give the bottom, the top, the drainage, kind of the overall scope of the wall. But the details, as far as the finish, which kind of block is used, comes down to the developer and the person, the contractor who's, who's doing it, to make those decisions and finalize those plans. Another set of engineered plans, specifically for the wall, are developed, and then submitted to the building department for their review in support of the permit to build the wall.
I understand that. That's how it's typically done. But when I see "by others" on a plan like this, I'm thinking, is there a third-party person who's not...
That's, yes, the, there'd be another engineer who would do that wall.
Well, no, that's not a, somebody who's outside the purview of the owner, a third-party, somebody else who's responsible for it. But the owner is responsible, the owner developer is responsible to install it. By others means...
Designed.
Designed, and, you know, by others, it's not under your purview.
Correct. That's right.
You're not the design engineer.
Not, not designing the wall.
No, I, I understand how they, how they go together and so forth, but I've never seen it labeled such as. I had a question on the EV parking stalls. On SP 1, it shows, on SP, CSP 1, it shows six Level 2 van-access parking. And I think it's supposed to mean EV parking, how that's labeled.
So, in our ART meetings, we had a lot of discussions on this. So, they're EV-ready. The requirement from the building code is they be EV-ready. So, they will have conduits and branch circuits available to them to accommodate EV charging. But there's a, it's kind of a gray area on, how many do you need for handicap EV? So, what we've did, and in our discussions, we combined a, one handicap spot that is also van-accessible, and it has access, access to an EV charging unit. So, you kind of get a three-for-one with one of those.
Yeah, it just doesn't say EV on it. It says "six Level 2 van-access." They're supposed to say EV? I, I thought...
There's not six of them, no. You're getting that from what sheet?
CSP 1.
Oh, a typo, okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's probably a typo. I just...
Yeah, six Level 2 EV-ready, okay. So, it's, so it's six EV-ready. Is that... Glenn can weigh in on that.
Glenn Martin, again, with Design Professionals. Yeah, the top locations of the EV parking will have six EV-ready spaces, and two of those will be van-accessible. And in the lower area, we'll also have five EV-ready spaces with two van-accessible. I think the wording may not be correct, but we'll make an adjustment to clean those up.
Yeah. And...
Can I interrupt for a second, Island? I'll entertain a motion to extend the meeting, because we're getting close to the end of the meeting, and we still have a lot to cover.
Second, extend the meeting till, what time? Till 12?
12.
Till 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No, it's okay.
Are we going to vote?
Oh. All in favor, please raise your hand, aye.
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 Sorry about that.
First person to take, I think that's, those are my questions. I think I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Limow?
Thank you. I just think we got a little clarification on encroachment, easements, the swell. I understand there's going to be some easements written up. Sounds like both properties are draining into the same area, the same discharge. So, in that easement, is there going to be an explanation on who's going to maintain it, if something goes wrong with it? How's all that going to work?
What happened is, prior, an application had actually come in, was approved by this commission, in which the company that's operating, the mulch company, did some drain, did some drainage, drainage work. And it was done in an area that is also subject to an open-space easement. So, it's part of the open space on our site. So, at the time that this commission reviewed the application, that prior application, a letter was submitted by the former owner of our site, that said they had no concerns with that work on our site. The commission approved it, but there was never a formal easement allowing that activity.
The current easement belongs to the town of Enfield?
Exactly. There's an open-space easement for the town of Enfield. The nice part of that easement, though, is it has built-in language that allows this commission, which has actually already approved the work that happened. But this, this commission can formally approve that, and then we can record the fact that it was reproved, and the easement that we would grant. Instead of just a letter from the owner that says, "We have no problem with it," there'll be a formal easement, where the app, the current owner applicant will, will be, will be granting an easement to allow them to maintain the facilities that they've already done.
The abut.
The abut.
The abut can come on your property to maintain it.
Exactly.
And you can maintain it as well.
It would be, and not, we don't have, wouldn't have any obligation to, because it's for, it's for their property. But yes, it'll be on our land.
Aren't you draining into it as well? I thought you're draining into the same spot?
If you would, I'll take that.
Sure.
I'll take that question. So...
I'm sorry, that's right, I thought I heard. You're both draining into the same spot.
Right. Let me, let me do a better job explaining what I...
Better than your attorney?
No, no, not the attorney, no. From a drainage side.
I'm kidding. Yeah, it's getting late.
I like, I like to play with the... At least they didn't call you an engineer, right? All right. So, so prior to this, what we're talking about, this application, the neighbor, the mulch company next, was receiving water from this, this is a field, a big open field, as I said earlier, it all slopes left to right, to the mulch company. So, part of their development, they put in a big swell. They put a cutoff swell. So, all that water, instead of coming to their building, that you see in this plan here, and I'll kind of, so they put a swell in along here. So, that brings all the water to this back corner.
Right.
And it's into a rip-rap channel. It brings it over to a detention basin, all on their property. So, that, prior to this development, any development, water came off this hill, hit that swell, ran down there, gets into that rip-rap channel, goes to the detention basin. At the rate it does naturally. What, while we're proposing with this development, the water still goes to that same part. In fact, it goes there at 3% less.
Right, because you're retaining it.
If you're retaining it. So, that's, that's what, the gist of it is, is that we're still going to the same spot. We haven't cut it off. You know, the water that was, was not going into the swell, that was coming through here, as I mentioned, that area gets cut off because of our development, and gets sent to the back. But overall, it's a reduction there, and a much bigger reduction up here, almost 90% reduction in what the water...
Both properties are going to have rights to the easement?
Well, we don't, the swell doesn't, our water doesn't touch the swell now. Once we do this development, the swell actually will probably dry up along between here, because there is no longer water feeding it. That water will then just get to the endpoint through our pipe system, instead of getting overland, getting caught in that swell, running to the south, and then into the...
Okay. So, where I'm going, is, in the future, there's going to be no argument on, if something goes wrong with that, whose responsibility is going to be to fix it? That's where I'm going with it.
And you're actually going to see that, because what's going to happen is, we'll file, I'm sorry, cancel later again for the record, you'll actually see it. Because the application describing the activity that's going on in the open space will get filed with this commission, and will also, the easement itself, that will be recorded, you'll see also. So, you'll see that, 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 it'll actually make things better for the, for the neighbor, because right now, it's kind of on a handshake with a letter, whereas they'll have a formal easement, and the different obligations and rights of both sides will be made perfectly clear.
Just so there's no problems down the road.
Exactly.
What other people are sitting up here.
You got it.
Thank you.
I think Steph might have some comments on that.
I just, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify one thing, and just to make sure we're clear. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not approve a swell on this property as part of the site plan for 18 Mullen. What happened was, the actual sequence was, they approved the site plan during the construction process. The improvement got built over the property line. We discovered it at the time that we got the ASB built for the certificate of zoning compliance. So, that's, that's how we kind of discovered that. And that's when that letter came in from the owner, the prior owner, that said he didn't have a problem with it. So, just wanted to clarify that sequence of events.
Yeah, so I didn't mean to imply that you were giving, you gave permission to do, have work done on my, our client, my client's property.
It doesn't get lost in the weeds somewhere down the road.
The design of, the, the design of that work was approved, just where it was located.
And we appreciate the applicant's willingness to pursue the easement, and deal with kind of the after-the-fact issue in the open space, and et cetera.
Yeah, good.
So, we'll, we'll have it all cleaned up. It's really just a matter of cleaning up some nets, frankly.
Always good to clean it up.
Right. And also making sure the commission understands what they're approving.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We need to make a condition of approval?
I've included in the condition of approval.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you. You all set, Commissioner Limow?
Thank you. Then, thank you.
Commissioner Gray?
Just a couple of things. You said you were going to keep your dumpsters inside buildings, and then in the summer, move them out. If they're going to be outside, we require dumpsters to be screened. So, we would need to see that on your plan, or they remain inside. So, that's one thing. Another thing is, along that western driveway, you're going to have tractor-trailers coming in, and they could be coming, because they're coming from wherever. They may be sitting there overnight. Is there a way that you could put a sign, "No parking, no idling"? Because you don't know, you know, guys coming from the West Coast, comes in, it's 4 o'clock in the morning. I'm just trying to think of protecting those neighbors, even though you're down in this little gully. And then the third thing is the engineering comments about the catch basins. Did you see that?
Yes. And I, I had that in my original little presentation, and I apologize, I skipped over that.
Thank you.
We did receive those later, later today, this afternoon. And that's, again, another typo error. Those elevations are calculated. For some reason, the computer decided making zeros, so that'll be corrected. And there was additional comment about cover on a couple of pipes up here in the front, in particular, these two pipes, this one here and this one there. And I looked at that once I saw the comment, and we can rectify that as well. We can get additional cover by changing these inverts, no location of anything, just, just changing some numbers and how it's built. So, that's easily done. Thank you.
Can you comment with respect to the dumpsters? It's well taken. If there's, if there is going to be a plan to move them outside, to make sure, we review the regulations, and that any appropriate screening is employed and reviewed.
Okay. And just, you know, just thinking of the neighbors about the parking on that driveway, that would be a nice thing for them. Thank you.
And just so, I, I understand, you're talking about parking along this, this west driveway here?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's where, no parking signs, or no, yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all set? Oh, Commissioner Petronella?
Another question for, for staff through, through the chair. Because this is a spec bill that I guess. There's no proposed tenant, unknown. So, if, if they come to terms with a tenant, that use, do they have to come back before us, or is that something that's done administratively, or what, what would be the process there?
Well, the application was submitted for warehouse distribution, so that's probably the target, you know, I assume. If, if they were to propose another use, we would look at the use table in the zoning regs, and determine how that use were potentially permissible in the zone. Obviously, special permit uses would have to come back to you. If, if it were a use that didn't require any additional parking, I'm not sure that that would necessarily have to come back to you. So, it kind of varies depending upon the specifics of, of the, the use change. The speculative buildings are, by their nature, they're somewhat difficult for us, you know, to process, because we don't really know. We have an idea. This particular facility, and I think I might have mentioned it in the staff comments, was, I don't want to say it's overparked, but for warehouse distribution, it's certainly, or probably overparked. And that's a good thing, in a sense, getting to what you're talking about, because they might have some margin, you know, of additional parking that might accommodate some other, some other uses. So... some other uses, so. I don't know if that answers the question, but.
I, I guess the answer is, is if it's, if it's a warehouse distribution, it's not really, it'll be under the purview of just a staff review or just a quick review of it and so forth.
Right, I mean, the use, the I-zone allows a lot of uses, manufacturing uses, assembly, fabrication, all sorts of things, typical for an I-zone. Each of those has their own kind of parking ratio and things, so we would probably look at that. And usually, if the parking ratio falls within what was approved, and the use is allowed kind of as of right, like a site plan use, we would, we would typically allow that. We would probably come to you and just maybe informally, you know, advise you. But that's how we would, I think, approach it.
Thank you, Matt.
Sure, sure.
Is there any reason, staff asks, that we should keep it open?
This is, this is a site plan app, so it's not a public hearing, so there's no opening or closing that's necessary. We did hand out to you this evening, we were still waiting for some staff comments to get back, which we got back, some of them were a little late in the process, but we're trying to move things along to the extent that we can. So we drafted up a motion, you'll see the staff comments, I think someone had made reference to some of them. So we tried to incorporate into the conditions what we felt was necessary. We gave a copy to attorneys later, I don't believe they have any issues.
We do not.
With any of the conditions. So if, if you choose to act tonight, it's, I think it's in a position to act, so, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hulinski.
I still have a concern about the Route 5, and this is to staff, about the Route 5 intersection.
Sure.
You know, you got the Mulch trucks, you've got the additional traffic now with this warehouse facility, and based on comments from Commissioner Petronella, who lives through it on a regular basis, it sounds like that could be a bottleneck point during peak periods, when you've got the trucks going in and out, not only the trailer trucks from this facility, but the, the Mulch trucks as well. Not to mention whatever commuter traffic comes through there, which doesn't sound like a lot, but I know it's always been kind of a shortcut for some of the neighborhoods in the back there, so. What could we do to, could we make it a condition to do some kind of improvement for that intersection? Or to at least get a study from either the state or someone?
I would say no. I don't think you could condition the application, it's a site plan use, it's allowed as of right in an industrial zone. So as a policy matter, as a legislative matter, you've more or less said that this use is allowed in this zone without those types of, those types of conditions. Now that being said, you or staff probably could work with the applicant and work with OSTA, because they have to go to OSTA. A facility this size is going to need OSTA review and approval. And, you know, we can certainly engage them in a conversation and express your concerns about that. I don't know if there's anything physically that they can do. At the end of the day, you know, Route 5 is, is a state route, and it's under state jurisdiction. So, you know, they're, they're really the people that are going to decide one way or another, whether or not something needs to be done, and if so, what. But those are, I think, our options. But a condition I don't think would really be enforceable.
Well, I remember a few years back, in the Hazard Avenue facility, where they put the new medical facility across the street from the Dunkin' Donuts, that a, a, a traffic light was required by the state for approval of that facility.
By the state, right.
Okay. I'm not sure how that came about, because I wasn't on the commission at that, at that time.
Yeah.
My assumption is that they went to the state to get their permits and approvals to do the improvements in the state, and the state decided that you needed to analyze that intersection and the impacts, and the state required the light.
Okay, so, the impression I got when I asked the questions earlier is that the state could decide to review it, but it doesn't sound like it's a done deal.
Well, no, they'll review it. I mean, OSTA, I'm not an OSTA expert, but I think they have like kind of a tiered system of review, but they will review it, they absolutely will review it.
Okay.
It's my understanding, unless I'm, I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, everyone's nodding their head.
Okay.
It's late, 10:15, nod your heads. So, we'll do what we can, we'll express the concern and go from there.
So, Madam Chair, just, just real quick, I mean, the, the OSA, this is something that, like every planner in the state has an issue with, is that they will not review or do preliminary reviews of applications, they will only give you a little bit of guidance, or the applicant a little bit of guidance, but it's only after they have gotten local approval that they'll do a full review. So no one knows exactly what they're going to be looking at, or, you know, what, what sort of findings they're going to have. So there is always a possibility that they could require some sort of modifications to the roadways, lighting or traffic lane widening or something like that. But we never know until it happens.
Many years ago, DOT District was part of the review team, and Chet Laquala, who you may remember, was part of that team. And they would provide us with review comments on, on applications as a regular matter of how they approached their business. The state stopped doing that, you know, quite a number of years ago, for whatever reason. And so what we have is, is what we have. It's imperfect, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to state that, you know, my, my comments on the traffic are just my personal comments, I'm not trying to be, you know, an expert, it's not, nothing that I wish. I put my faith in the consultants, I mean, I, there's, they got a job to do, they're hired to do the job, I trust that their integrity, that they're doing the right job. I also put my faith in the state DOT and OSTA, that, that they're going to come back with their review comments and so forth, and, and that's it. And we certainly can't, we can make a suggestion, but we can't really stipulate that a change is made there. You know, we have to put our faith in, in, in their best judgment as well, so, thank you.
Yes, just if I could, one thing on the traffic. Two recent developments we had on 190, I expressed my thought deeply about traffic at the state and de-acceleration lanes. And the conditions there, they're on Route 190, were a lot worse than what we're looking at here. And don't hold your breath, because we got nothing from the state. So it's that guy with the key again, with the money, and nothing happened. So don't hold your breath.
Okay. Yes.
Just a, just a quick question about parking, just informational, and, and two quick questions about landscaping. As far as parking, just from the developer's perspective, I know you're involved in, in past warehousing efforts, I'm, I'm just kind of curious how the, how the parking on this compares to those. I know you built to our regulations, of course, appreciated. Just wondering, you know, from, from your perspective, as a, your experience in warehousing, do you, do you see this as severely overbuilt or moderately overbuilt?
Michael Oskin, for the record. So are you referring to passenger vehicles in particular?
Passenger vehicle parking.
We think that, you know, we're probably going to be below what the requirement is, just based on the nature of what we've seen in the market. You could have as many employees as 50 or as many as two in these types of facilities, you know, it's really up to chance. But, you know, we're, we're willing to comply with what the requirements are.
Makes sense. So, so kind of on the upper range?
It would be, yeah.
If, if both spaces were maximized to the highest labor force possible.
That's correct.
Right, understood, thanks for that. And just two questions about landscaping. One was a comment, I appreciate the, the meadow mix, I thought that was a neat addition to the plan. I was kind of curious if there was considerations to expand the meadow mix to other areas. I know, I, I thought about maybe, I know a lot of drainage in the, in the southwestern corner, kind of a, a large open area, or other areas. And then, second question, if you don't mind just explaining, our, our regulation requires street trees, the, the one per 50 feet? If you could just clarify how that's meant as well.
Yes, again, Glenn Martin from Design Professionals. We are providing street trees along the frontage there, I believe it's three, that we're providing, which is sufficient for the tree parking required. And then for the meadow mix, we only provided it here, but we can look at adding additional areas of meadow mix if you prefer.
I, I, I'm just curious if it was considered? I mean, it, it makes sense to me as far as, you know, it's low maintenance, it's a little more beneficial to, you know, a little, a little less harsh of an impact on the, on the ecosystem, so it would make sense to me. I would say consider it, it would make sense, if it makes sense from your perspective as a professional, of course.
Yes, we can consider that.
It's, it would be acceptable to the applicant. Right. And, and for the street trees, so there, there's the landscaping that exists already in the, the frontage, right? Along the road?
Oh, yes, there's some existing vegetation in this area right here.
Right, okay.
Which is kind of low vegetation, but in time, it'll, it'll get tall.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, are we set to vote now? Roll call, please.
We are making a motion.
Oh, I apologize. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve SPR number 1922 with conditions and modifications, application. I'm sorry, motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve SPR number 1922 with conditions and modifications, application for a site plan approval to allow 130,000 plus or minus square foot industrial warehouse distribution building with associated improvements at Assessor's Map 16, Lot 3, Mullen Road, property owner LLC, owner applicant, Peter DiMali, PE agent, I-1 zone per the reference plans, reports, and application materials listed herein with the following 35 modifications and conditions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Hulinski.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
And John Petronella's four. And motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen, great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, it's, the next item is SPR 1923, but I believe it's continued till the next meeting. Do we need to take a vote on that?
Tabled.
Well, it's tabled. Do we need to take a vote on it, or is it just tabled?
It's tabled.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you did LoadStar. I thought that was the one we are. Oh, no, that was Krag. I apologize, LoadStar's next. God, I'm tired.
I'm going to head home.
I'm not going to be here till midnight.
This is just, more of a presentation, right?
Yeah, don't ask questions. We don't have any, other than requesting, we can request landscaping.
All right, this is on, hello, everyone. Thank you for being here at this late hour. My name is Sam Balone.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm with LoadStar Energy. We are a solar developer out of Avon, Connecticut, and have projects across Connecticut, New York, and Massachusetts. I am the project manager on this. I'll let Tim introduce himself.
Good evening, my name is Tim Coon, I'm a professional engineer with J.R. Russo and Associates out of East Windsor, and we are the site civil engineer for this project.
Great, thank you. So we are proposing a solar project on Town Farm Road and Abbey Road, as you can see in our site plan over here. It will be 1.9 megawatts, so it is under the jurisdiction of the Connecticut Siting Council, and we will be applying to the Siting Council in late November. But we just wanted to come and share these site plans with you, and see if you have any feedback, just as a standard practice. We're anticipating that the project will be operational in the spring of 2025. Then just a bit more about the property, so it is three parcels owned by Raffia Farms and members of the Raffia family. They total 15.8 acres, and we are, LoadStar is leasing it from them. So it's two different solar arrays, and they total 1.9 megawatts. There's going to be two different access drives to access each array, one coming off of Abbey Road up in the north, and another coming off Town Farm Road in the south. There will also be two different points of interconnection, so, meaning the utility poles, there'll be four utility poles coming off the access drive off Town Farm Road, and then another set of utility poles coming off Abbey Road. The total limit of disturbance will be 12.23 acres, so that'll include all the panels, the fence, access drives, and utility poles. The system will be a single access tracker system, so it's going to be following the sun from east to west. There is one wetland on the property up in the northwest corner, kind of where all the trees are, and we hold a 100-foot buffer from the wetland to all of the panels as required by the, by deep, and we will be applying for a stormwater permit from deep to. Let's see, the site is pretty flat in general, so there's no real regrading required, other than we have a swale proposed to direct stormwater runoff in the northwest corner. And then another thing to call out is we will have tree screening all along the west side and the south side to screen from the residences along Abbey Road and Town Farm Road. So I think that covers the high-level points of our project, but really, I just want to hear from you all and open it up to questions and answers.
Any questions? Commissioner DeGray.
I guess curiosity is more than a question, is, how are these panels going to be disposed of at the end? And the second question is, how long has LoadStar been in business? To, to, to give me an idea that you're going to be there for the long haul, I guess.
Right, right. Yeah, as for disposal of panels, so as required by the Connecticut Siting Council, we are required to completely decommission the project and remove everything off of the site at the end of its lifetime. Jeff Maisel, my coworker, might be able to better explain what we do with the panels disposal-wise. I don't know if Jeff, you want to comment on anything?
Yeah, good evening, my name's Jeff Maisel, I'm one of the founders and principals at LoadStar. With respect to panels, there are a number of business services now that offer recycling capabilities, so as part of the decommissioning that Sam was mentioning, we're going to be able to recycle these solar modules. They have a 25-year warranty by the manufacturers, so at the end of their, at the end of the 25-year warranty, they're still guaranteed to be 85% efficient from their current nameplate. And so we've seen the modules that were originally installed on the White House in the 1970s, they're at Union College right now. There's, so we've got in-the-field examples of modules that have been operating for over 50 years.
And just one more question, because this is relatively new to everyone, these solar farms. If one of these gets broken somehow, I don't know how, but I'm just guessing, you know, birds, animals, whatever, would it leak any kind of hazardous material into the soil or into the air? That, you know, that.
It's a great question.
It's a concern.
It's a great question, and in fact, the Connecticut Siting Council requires us to do what's called TCLP testing with every module we bring here in the state, so. And what that means is that we actually have to take a module, cut a hole And what that means is that we actually have to take a module, cut a hole in it, grind it up into powder, send it off for testing, and they subject it to a number, and this, these are actual, every single project we do in Connecticut, this happens for. They grind that up into a powder and test it for every kind of potential contaminant. So, that's done at the Connecticut Siting Council, and those TCLP tests are submitted to the state.
Okay, thank you. I'm just thinking that maybe in 25 years, the landowner will take the land back and hopefully utilize it as farmland again. That's my concern. Thank you.
It's a great question.
Yep, and, um, going back to your question on Loadstar Energy, uh, so, it was founded in 2014 by Jeff and two other owners, and, um, they've also been in the solar industry for much longer than that, so, we, we will be around.
All right, thank you.
Any other? Commissioner D'Angelo?
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I'm curious about the, the separation of two different arrays, if you can just explain, you know, why you have it set up that way? It's, I, I see it's listed under two different LLCs as well, so, just any information you could share there.
Yeah, so, these pro, these two projects are, or, well, one project, but two arrays, are part of a statewide program called NRES, the Non-Residential Energy Solutions Program, um, and it's an auction, and you have to bid in projects. At the time that this was bid in, a couple years ago, there were, uh, certain size categories, about how many megawatts you can bid in, um, and just due to the maximum capacity of the size buckets, we had to bid them in as two separate arrays. So, they got two separate project awards, two separate contracts for the offtake of the power, um, but since they are located next to each other, will be built, permitted, all of that together.
Thank you.
You sit. Mr. Petronella?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of operational questions. Um, well, I guess the main axis is gonna come off of Abbey Road, and then it looks like there's another entry on, um, Town Farm Road, so, um, is that, that, that's correct, there, there's gonna be a gate on Abbey Road and a, and a road in there, I think, I see?
Yep, the, there'll be a gate on both, uh, the entrance to Abbey and Town Farm Road, in two different access points. I don't think either one will really be the main one. Really, it'll be, the Town Farm Road will be used to service the, uh, southern array, and the Abbey Road entrance will be used to service the northern array.
Another question, the, these appear to be facing due east. The, typically, I see these always facing south. Am I, am I right or wrong?
Yes, you are right, so...
And are they gonna be as efficient? It's just, again, it's, it's an operational question.
Yes, so, it's, uh, that has to do with a fixed-tilt system versus a tracker, so, typically, you're thinking of fixed-tilt panels, which don't move, they just stay at the same angle. Those are usually southern sloping. A tracker system actually moves on an axis, and it's oriented east to west, so it'll track the sun over time, and, um, the tracker is actually more efficient, produces more energy.
Another one, directly to the east of that, is that additional farmland, and as that gets plowed several times a year, it creates a lot of dirt, dust flying around. To me, I see it as a magnet to the panels, uh, and, and they're gonna be sitting on it. I mean, do you rely on rainstorms just to clean them off? I, I assume you do, and that's it, so if it doesn't rain for a while, they're gonna be covered with a film of dirt or dust, or whatever, is that...
That's correct, so, the, the good news in the, in the northeast is we get plenty of rain, particularly in 2023.
Well, this year...
But if we were in, say, the, the desert in the southwest, or, you know, Nevada, we, you actually, because you get so little rain, you actually do have to physically go out and wash the modules to get the dust and grime off them in order for them to be efficient. So, we're fortunate here in the northeast, that we may lose a little production for a week or something like that, when, right after a harvest, if they, if they hade the field, we might get some residue on there that would, that would slow our production down, or minimize the sunlight that gets through, but once we get a rainstorm, it washes right off.
Yeah, and, and, and as far as the screening, what, what, what is it mostly? I see, uh, it's all evergreen, um, 150 white spruce, um, that's pretty much gonna be around the, around the, um, western, and, and I guess the, the south on, on Town Farm Road?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, all right. That's it, I don't have any further questions.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming in and sharing this with us. It was a very informative presentation, and we appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
Does, does staff have anything?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
I was looking for staff, through chair, the staff. Uh, Laura, so, this is being developed right along these residential properties here. So, do these property owners have any say, or they can come in and speak about this, or...
They can speak to the, to the Siting Council directly when they have their public hearing.
So, there'll be a public hearing other than this venue?
Right, it's with the Connecticut Siting Council, so they do hope...
Are these people being notified, or something like this is going in their backyard?
They will, when we submit to Siting Council, the town gets notice, and all of the abutters get notice.
So, they know about it?
Yeah, they will.
And three of those neighbors are, are landlords, so, I mean, I think the vast majority of those abutters are actually involved in the project.
Okay, as long as they know.
Yep.
Well, thank you again. Have a nice evening, we appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on. Any other business proper to come before said meeting? No? Okay.
Proper, what's proper?
I know you're thinking, where did that come from?
Thank you. It's a new one.
So, I'll, I'll get to, I'll get to that when we get to the part of the board.
I like the fun.
Uh, is there any correspondence?
Just one quick thing, I don't know if you've seen it in the paper, but when Stanley bought the North Metro Industrial Park, and usually when...
Zero King Street.
Yeah. And so, I'm hoping that he has plans, 'cause we've approved a lot of things for that.
Yes, yes.
That's exciting.
Yes. Okay, planning staff report.
Okay, so, you may have noticed that the agenda looks a little odd, a little different.
Yes.
So, we are starting to use the Civic Plus, which is, um, basically a, a software that lets you put, um, all of your data into the line items of your agenda. Now, it's not live right now for you to do it, but in the future, when we finally get this down pat and get all the wording that we want as corrected, um, you should be able to go online, look at the agenda, and click on the item, and instead of the master packet, you're gonna get all of those items just for that line item.
Yeah.
So, this should actually help you a lot when you're using your tablets, because I guess that's one of the things that's, that's been a hard time, that you've had a hard time with, is downloading the whole master packet.
Yep.
This way, you only have to download that, that item's narratives and, and items, or, you know, whatever is included with that, that hearing.
Town council used to do that, I don't, town council used to do that, I don't know if they still do it or not.
No, they've just started, so, we're, we're second in line, so, um, Sheila Bailey has been working with the town council with this for many months now, and Cheryl as well. And, uh, so, this is, you know, ultimately, we're gonna have all the agendas under this format, so if you are going digital, you could just click that link, and you're gonna see everything associated with that item.
And, and you'll tell us when it goes live?
No, we're gonna let you guess. Of course we will.
Well, the public needs to know.
Of course we will. So, yeah, so, we're still working on it. Uh, we just got ZBA onboard, like, this week, so we're gonna be, slowly get to all the commissions with this.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think it's, I think it's gonna be fabulous, and actually, Rebecca may or may not know this, that she's gonna be able to do minutes through here. So, it's, it's, I think it's a really cool software, and I think it's gonna save us a lot of time.
Anything else?
Anything else? Um, next week, we have, um, interviews once again for the Secretary Thibault. But meanwhile, we do have an interim person, so, um, she's been a great help. She can't work full-time, but, um, she's been fabulous, so...
Great.
We're trying.
Okay.
It's, we're, we're still falling, you know, a little behind in things, but we're trying to catch up, trying to keep up with things.
I guess we don't have, do we have administrative approvals?
Not at this time.
Okay. Applications received?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
And we've adjourned at 10...
10:39.
10:39, thank you.